To see it better.
You ready? All right, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and give the prayer and pledge, and we'll follow that with the roll call. Please stand. Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening. We're grateful for the wonderful weather that we have. We're grateful for this building that we can handle the affairs of the city. We ask this night for a spirit of cooperation and leadership, that we might be able to peacefully and respectfully handle the affairs of the city. We ask a blessing over those who are serving here or overseas. Protect their families and loved ones. Please be with the sick, the needy, and the afflicted, and with our children. Let them know that we love them and that they are in our thoughts and prayers and these things we say in my name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. Call the guy that's at the back there. Roll call, please.
Terry Lamar?
Here.
Joya Shropshire?
Here.
Lori Bradshaw?
Here.
Kenneth Brishers?
Here.
Tyler Brown?
I'm here.
That didn't sound like you were convinced that you were here. Are you sure?
Positive.
That's what it sounded like. Charles Trammell? Chris Gantier?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bruce Smith, sorry, I don't know why I just said that.
Sorry, I know who he's talking about.
Thank you. We have no petitions from the audience. We will kind of tonight skip around a little bit in the interest of not keeping everybody till the end of the meeting. We'll go ahead with the consent agenda item number three. Do we have any items to pull?
C.
Item C?
E and F.
Item E, item F. Any others? Okay, do I have a motion for A, B, D? Can you approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before you go to that, for procedure.
Can you tell me who had the second? Because two people said it at the same time.
Sorry.
I was one of the seven options.
Brishers had the second.
Would you be opposed to including the addendum stuff under the consent agenda so for the expedient?
Yeah, we've got an order to that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other discussion or am I good?
No, we're good. Call, the vote will be for A, B, and D to be approved.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item C. Approved claims for purchase orders through September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. No motion?
Motion. Second.
Who had that? You had the motion, Brishers, and the second was Brown. Sorry, it was quiet.
No, you're good. I have one purchase order where we, in the spirit of trying to save money for the city, I have a particular purchase order that I thought was something that we should talk about. And Courtney, it came from you, and we bought coffee for the office, I guess, for thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, well, I think that's a good spending practice, I guess, especially when we're talking about saving every penny.
I understand. That was right after the last council meeting, and I had employees ready to walk out. I felt like a coffee was a good pick-me-up. Thirty bucks or so helped keep employees here. I think it's worth it. It's not something I do every day. It's not something I do every month. I don't spend a lot of money.
Okay. I do understand the need to keep employees happy. I also understand the need to keep employees employed. And there needs to be a balance there, so I can understand that. There was another one placed in front of me to talk about. It was for supplies at the football game. I didn't have this purchase order, and it was already, it's already signed off on, but I think that discussion was along the same lines. But I, I personally, again, that one was set in front of me, but I had a conversation with Jeremy about that one where it's my understanding he was paying it out of his donations account and not out of city bonds.
The football games, last year, we did the same thing. The SROs worked sixteen-hour days that day. They'd go to the school, they'd leave the school, come straight to the football field. I'd go home with my own cooker, cook burgers and hot dogs, come back. We set the tent up. The community actually comes and gets some, too. So that's what that's for. I take it out of the donation account. That way, it's not in the general fund. But that's, that's what I did. I did talk to Councilman Brown before I did it, because I know where we're at financially. So I wanted an opinion, other than my own, before I did that this year. And we've got three more games, so it's not a huge expense. But it's just kind of, live all day at school, come straight there, feed them, feed some community members. We feed the staff of the school that's working there that's left over, so that's what that's for.
Again, I don't particularly take issue with that one when it's paid out of a donations account, but...
All right. Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Gantier?
No.
Smith?
No.
No.
Lamar?
Sorry.
Okay. So, just so you guys know, that's not the specific purchase orders that he just brought up. That's every purchase order that you just signed or did not sign. Every single purchase order that you guys had placed in front of you, plus the ones in the basket, that's what you guys just voted no for. So we're not paying?
Thank you for letting us know that.
Okay.
So we're not paying any of them?
So have you signed the purchase orders already?
Yes. They've been signed.
I have four yeses, three noes.
No, we have four noes and three yeses. The agenda item was voted no to sign the purchase orders that have already been signed.
You were no?
That was a no.
I'll make a motion that we reconsider with the exclusion of PO 2420240605.
Second.
If they have voted no, is that okay to bring it back to table? Bring it back on the table?
We can reconsider. Do you want me to pull it up?
I don't know if you can reconsider because of the way it's worded. It's approve federal purchases.
Oh, these are just claims for purchase orders?
I'm sorry, see, approve claims for purchase orders.
You mean we have to approve all of them or none of them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's not really a discussion. It's approve claims for purchase orders, so I...
Well, we did, well, we pulled it off for discussion.
I think you can do the motion reconsider of votes.
To reconsider the vote for the original item?
Yeah, it's a, those were all part of the package, right?
Correct.
No.
No.
We're going to pass those out before meeting.
Yeah, the citizens are nobody only, we see. And each one of us only sees a portion.
The purpose of the agenda is to educate the public and let them know what you're going to do here. I think you can do your approval because it's not listing anything itemized.
Has that one been signed?
It's scratched out.
Well, if it's not signed, then can they do anything with it?
It's scratched out or a single line?
It's, I scratched it out after I realized what was going on.
Since that one is no longer signed, can we re-vote? And that one, just by default, would fall off?
Here's the issue you guys are having on this. Your ordinance, which, is that the coffee one you were just talking about? The issue you've got with that is your ordinance explicitly gives permission for her to go do that. So...
Also, that's a payment back to Visa, because that was used on my Visa credit card. So it's not to Heritage Cafe, it's to Visa, which is our credit cards. So if we don't pay it, we're going to have that delinquent thing as well.
I think you can do the motion reconsider the vote and pull that off if that's what you want to do. If you vote no on it, I'm not sure there are ramifications regarding what happens with that money. I'll have to look at that. Because your ordinance specifically gives a part of $500 permission spending. So by not approving it, it would be you voting not to go with your ordinance that you approved or someone previously that you've done has approved.
When, when we start pulling these off, are we going to start having to go down through these every meeting, one by one, and either approve or disprove them?
I don't think you have to. I mean, you can always do it in a sense of doing it, but I think that's what the issue is, is can you pull them off? You probably can pull them off, but if you, if the vote comes out no not to approve it, it's not approving something your ordinance specifically gives authority for someone to do.
There's nothing that stops Jeremy from buying every cop dinner every day because it's under $500?
Oh, it's in your ordinance.
Or back from buying?
Unless he runs out of money in his budget.
Back from providing this dinner at every city council meeting?
Right hand.
As long as it's not $500, then...
I don't think so. Not your ordinance does this.
Bring on the jail.
Or management could be probably brought up in other ways, but preventing it...
So do we want to recall this one? Get it around to?
You could do, you have to vacate your vote is what you would have to do.
So we need a motion to vacate?
I'll make a motion to vacate.
I'll second.
We have a motion to vacate. Joya, in a second, from Bradshaw.
And then they vote on that before they do anything else with that item?
I have a discussion about that.
And discussion.
What, what happens when we vacate?
Then you're back to where you started on C.
Okay.
Okay, who is the motion in second?
The motion was Joya, second was Bradshaw.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
All right. We will revisit item C. Approved claims for purchase orders through September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Brown?
Second.
And a second from Brishers.
By way of discussion, can we pull that one off while we consider the possibilities and approve the rest? Or do we have to do all or none?
We'll have to make an amended motion whenever we get done. But my discussion with Chase is, I think there's a majority of the council that doesn't want to approve this, but then what?
And that, I can research on it, because your ordinance supposedly...
But I know we didn't...
I think it's enough similar to what you and I talked about.
Yeah, but I know at one time in the meeting, we, a while back, we did do some instructing to not spend anything unless it was necessary.
I have a question. And if I make a motion, can I amend it that any food or beverage-related purchases from here on out be approved by the mayor first?
I think you can put that on the agenda separately. I think you can do that if you get any...
I can't tie it to this motion?
I don't think so, because there's no notice of...
Okay. Can I bring it up under new business?
It's not unforeseen business.
That's pretty unforeseen.
Yeah.
I think you can put it on separate, I think you can put it on separate, but I think it needs to be identified what you're going to vote for. Anytime you're going to vote on something, I think the public has a right to know what it is before...
Can I amend my motion to ask Sac to put that on the next council meeting?
You can just look at me and say do it, or would you do it?
Okay.
I don't think you can, because it's still a move.
Hey, can we put that on the next council meeting for discussion? Okay, thank you.
Just move on. Time to get over there to pass thirty.
Further discussion? Call for the vote?
What, what do?
We don't even have a motion yet, do we?
I think we did.
I made a motion to pay for them all.
Oh.
Motion's to pay for them all.
All right, sorry.
The motion is to pay for all of them?
Which I think we're legally obligated to do. I think we just need to change our procedures on going forward.
Yeah, I agree.
If you disagree with the procedures, I think that's how you fix it. I don't know that you can, I mean, you can vote however you want. You don't have the ramifications of voting no to unauthorized ordinance. Without danger, sir.
Good?
Yep.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Good. Item E. Approved accepting a bid from Custom Cuts Lawn Care in the amount of $195 for the abatement of a property at 309 Southeast Fourteenth to be paid from our property acquisition reserve. Nuisance abatement account 464655450. No other bids received.
So move.
Second.
I got a motion from Gantier, second from Brishers.
Your question on, did we seek bids? Did we contact people? How, what was the process on that?
Mowing bids do not require them to come to council. The community, the code enforcement officer has the ability to call for bids directly. And they did seek bids and none were received other than Custom Cuts Lawn Care.
So how many did he seek, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Further discussion? If none, call for vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Item F. Approved declaring surplus engine three, a 2005 HME pumper, VIN number 0669 from the prior fire department, and listing for sale on the Purple Wave Auction website.
I'll make a motion that we do this, but delay the actual contacting of Purple Wave Auction. I'll explain.
So we got two original motions at the same time for two different things.
Sorry, go ahead with those.
I think if we make the motion, we can have the discussion. So a motion from Gantier, a second from Brishers.
Cool with you?
Yeah.
The reason I'm saying this, I talked with BK. He's in favor of this, but there is a company that buys used fire trucks. He couldn't be here tonight because he's in Oklahoma City. And he wants to get a bid or, or offer from that company so we can set a minimum bid with Purple Wave. That's all it's regarding. And so that would give us the time for him to do that and not immediately put it on Purple Wave.
Well, Purple Wave, you can't set minimum bids, so...
I'm just, that's what BK asked me to bring forward tonight, that's all.
Here's a little clarification on that. He's got a website that will, or a company that will purchase that, and they'll give us a, an amount for that. If we go to auction that off, whether it's Purple Wave or not, because that is still a good engine, they want to put a reserve on that auction. Obviously, Purple Wave, you can't. But if they don't get what that engine is at least worth for this other company, then they can pull that and sell it to the company that'll give them the money that they've been looking for.
So the, we don't know for sure whether it's going on...
Should I just amend my motion to just surplusing it, and then we can figure out next?
I think we should surplus it as BK's written it there and let him handle...
Well, if it's surplus as written, it has to go to Purple Wave. And it's surplus, and it's amended to BK's discretion, auction website, or BK's discretion...
He'll already have the, the bid will come in for that, and they can leave it on Purple Wave for a couple of weeks if it doesn't bring that.
But he wanted time to, he says there's a... But he wanted time to, he says there's a thirty to forty-five day window that this other company, when they say they'll buy it, it's good for a certain amount of time and he wants to make sure that we get that amount to have that window set. That's, that's the reason, it's a timing thing. And he just-
That's the case, then we could list it for, or we can surplus it now and then he would just have to bring it back to council for where we're gonna list it.
I think that's probably the best idea.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
To remove the fact that we're gonna list it on Purple Wave.
Yes.
So we'll surplus it.
Because he has to have a surplus to get the bid.
Correct.
But he doesn't wanna bind us under something that may not get us what we could for it.
So, you amend your second?
Yep.
When you're ready, call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Alright, we'll go on to item four A, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of the June 30th, 2023 independent auditor's report of financial statements for the city of Prior Creek, Oklahoma, as presented by Mike Kirkendall of Public and Associates, PC certified public account office.
Motion?
Second.
A motion from Joya, a second from Bradshaw.
Hello, um, okay, so, um, we've got the report here. It's about ninety-five pages. And instead of us spending the time to go through ninety-five pages, I'm gonna give you a summary overview of the report and the, the fine, you know, the outcome of the report.
May I ask a question? Do we have copies to follow along?
Uh, the report copies are here. I've got PDFs. I'm not gonna go through the individual report though, but you can have it to, to, yeah, but here's the, the, uh, screen.
When was that sent to the city?
I'm sorry?
When was that sent to our city leadership?
Um, we had one version about two weeks ago and then we had a modification.
Can I make a motion to table this until we've had time to review it?
I'll second that motion.
The audit?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't think that we should be approving anything that's ninety-five pages that we've not even seen before in a five-minute presentation. And I'm sorry that you guys might differ from that, but...
Who's the second?
Me.
Any other discussion on that?
Yes. Ho- hold on a minute, Ms. Kirkendall. We, yes, we did not receive this and it is ninety-five pages. But I don't see anything wrong with her going ahead and giving her presentation to give us a summary of it. And then again, you can study the whole document later. We had the same issue come up last year, or maybe a year before last, but I don't see anything wrong with her giving her presentation to us to let us know the overview of it.
What's gonna change?
Yeah, I guess my question too is, even if this-
I think you can pass the discussion here and vote.
Um, yeah, we have an amendment to table.
What's gonna change is hopefully the practice of not giving us documents as we come into a council meeting that we don't know what they say.
Smith?
No.
Lamar?
What, what are we voting for?
Tabling the item.
Excuse me, I reject, put back. Yes.
You would like to table the item, correct?
Yes, to table.
Lamar?
No.
Shropshire?
Nope.
Bradshaw?
No.
Frischiers?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Okay, it's not being tabled.
Do we have to go back?
I, I understand too. And if you guys have questions or anything after you get the copy of the report to you, then anytime, anybody can contact me anytime, so... So we're gonna, we're gonna start. And again, I'm just gonna put some of the, the more important things into my summary so that we can get that out of the report. Um, our, our firm, just a little bit of background information, is, is we've been in business since, in, in a firm for CPA for, since nineteen ninety-two. And we have, uh, firms in Texas, Missouri, and Kansas in addition to Oklahoma. We have the highest rating for peer review and we're a member of the AICPA and, and the Oklahoma Society of CPAs. So the scope of the audit is, uh, a city audit has, uh, basic financial statements. So those are, uh, what we call government-wide. There's several different components. And one is called government-wide financial statements. There's fund financial statements and the notes to the financial statements that are compromised, or that this report is comprised of. And then we, this year, we had to add an extra layer to it, which is called a single audit. It's a, it's a compliance top audit whenever you have major programs from federal funds that exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand in expenditures in the current fiscal year. So we had to add that second layer to the audit this year. Our responsibilities of the audit is that we conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards and the requirements for, um, uniform guidance requirements on the single audit. Um, that we plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute, that the basic financial statements are free of material misstatement and taken into reasonable assurance about whether material non-compliance with the compliance requirements referred to above had occurred, whether that was due to fraud or error and express an opinion on the, uh, city of Prior's compliance based on our audit. We also do a report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations and report on the compliance for each major program under the internal control over compliance for the uniform guidance. So the next, uh, section we're gonna look at is, is the summary of the financial outcome on each set of financial statements. So I, basically, I said there were three components. Um, we've got the government-wide, which means that's all city funds, uh, whether that's municipal authority, public works authority, city funds. So we had total assets and deferred outflows of a hundred, one hundred and twenty-four million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, two forty-four. We had total liabilities and deferred inflows of twenty-three million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six fifty-three. That makes your net position, um, we have a invested in capital assets net of debt, seventy-seven million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two sixty-three. We had restricted money, eighteen million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight thirty-four. We had unrestricted monies, uh, to operate on in subsequent years, five million, ninety-four thousand, four ninety-four. And the, this year's change in net position or net income on the government-wide financial statements was my, one million, nine hundred and nine thousand, four twenty-nine. We had fund financial statements, which, uh, this covers just the governmental funds, which is just the city funds, which would be the general fund and all the special revenue funds, capital project funds. Um, so we had total assets on this set of financial statements of eleven million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six twenty-five. We had total liability, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven ninety-three. Fund balances restricted of that amount were seven million, three hundred and three thousand, seven ninety-eight. And unrestricted was three million, eighty-three thousand, thirty-four. And to make your changes in fund balances or net loss for the year on the government funds was one million, one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, fifty-five. The difference between this set of financial statements and the first one, again, is the city funds only and it does not have any capital assets on it. It's basically a cash, basic cash flow on our cash activity financial statements. Um, proprietary funds are, um, the, you know, the rec center and the golf course and the public works authority. And we had total assets, five, fifty-two million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven forty-five. We had total liabilities, three million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, two seventy-four. When, and that brings you to your net position of invested in capital assets after debt was thirty-four million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five fifty-three. We had restricted net position of eleven million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, thirty-six. Unrestricted monies in the proprietary funds were three million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eight eighty-two. So made a change in net position or net income for proprietary funds, one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, four fifty-two. The next area we're gonna, wanna talk about are the, um, following, uh, communications that we need to have with the governing board. And one is on illegal acts. We had nothing come to our attention as a result of performing our audit procedures. There were no changes in significant accounting policies and no difficulties or disagreements with management in conducting the audit. And there was full access to books and records. The next schedule is related to the summary of findings and question cost. And this is a summary of auditor's results, which is basically where we're gonna sum it up how the audit, what the outcome was. So the type of auditor's report issued on whether the financial statements were in accordance with GAAP, internal control over, and, and internal control over financial reporting is it was unmodified, which means it was a good report. We didn't have any findings to relate on that. So were there any material weaknesses identified? No. Were there any significant deficiencies identified? No. Was there any non-compliance material to the financial statements noted? No. And then under the federal awards, the single audit section that we had to add, uh, of the test of compliance of material weaknesses, there were none identified. There were no significant deficiencies identified in the, in that section either. So the type of, of auditor's report on compliance for your major federal programs, um, was unmodified as well. There, were there any audit findings that were required to be recorded, uh, reported to you? And there were no audit findings in relation to the single audit. So the, the audit part, the program that was identified as the program that went over the seven hundred and fifty thousand was the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And again, the dollar threshold for that was seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we have, uh, under the summary of findings for financial statement and federal award findings, uh, there were none for last year or this year. So the financial and compliance audit addresses three basic questions. And are there financial statements, are the financial statements free of material with statements? As we issued an unmodified opinion that the financial statements presented fairly in all material respects. Are the internal controls over financial reporting adequately designed and operating effectively? We did not identify any deficiencies in the internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. And did the prior, uh, city of Prior Creek, Oklahoma comply in all material respects with the finance-related laws and regulations? No material non-compliance was noted with the finance-related laws and regulations that govern the city's operations. So basically, that is, that's the report. Last page is just a, we appreciate the opportunity.
So what did you just tell us?
We're doing, we're doing everything right.
Right, yeah, there was, it was unmodified report for the regular fi- financial audit. We do the regular financial statement audit every year and we issue an opinion on that. And so that was unmodified. We didn't have any findings related to material discrepancies or significant assist deficiencies. And then we go to the next layer where we tested compliance with the ARPA grants, with the expenditures, um, that were made on that grant. And we didn't have anything as well as that. It was unmodified. It was, it was good. Everything came out fine.
So we're just talking about it then? Everything legal, good, good spending, good, everything, right?
That's good from what, our, our opinion, from what we did on our audit and, and the tests that we performed. We didn't have anything to disclose.
If the federal government picked us out, you guys are saying you think we would be okay. That's right?
Yeah.
That, that's what the audit, the purpose of it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we do a random test. We, we can't go in and do a hundred percent test, but we do a random test and we, and based on material, the materiality of it, everything looks, looks good to us, so...
Well, I appreciate the report, but I agree, before I approve a report, I'd like to see it.
I, I agree. And you've got, and like I said, you can look at the report once she sends it to you and, and she can give you my email address. If you have any questions or wanna go over it, you can give me a call and we can set up a meeting.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And that's summarized in your management representation letter too, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And that is in the packet?
Mm-hmm.
That's page ten, eleven, and twelve.
Yes, that, I mean, I read that. That tells what they're going to be looking over.
Yeah, that, that shows that, that basically that you all have given us everything we needed to do the audit and that everything was disclosed to us that we needed to have in front of us to do the audit, so...
A summary of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So ju- just for disclosure, uh, this is basically just saying on paper, we're okay. If something were to be found, we're not gonna come back and ask, well, why didn't the audit? You know?
Well, that, it's, it's re-
What's, what's the scope?
It's reasonable assurance. I mean, we, like I said, we can't do a hundred percent test.
Right.
And of all financial activities, if there's cash involved, there's always a risk of something that you, you're never gonna know. I mean, so, but from, from what is recorded in the financial statements ties to the cash and activities and, and all the controls that are underneath that, everything that we have, can see from the standpoint that we are looking at, that everything's fine.
So basically, especially with the intention to catch something like a fifty thousand dollar discrepancies there, but...
But you, you say, another thing you have to look at from what we look at is you're looking at, you know, millions, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars.
Oh, right, yeah.
And so fifty million, fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. But when you're looking at the big numbers, you know, we have to set materiality thresholds on things to be able to progress without ending up getting in the dark hole and looking at every transaction there is to look at, so...
I've got a couple of questions. And this is just for education for me and maybe for others too. If, if the municipality was to undergo an audit from the state auditor's office, do you all help with that or do you participate in that somehow in your scope?
We don't usually, they, it's usually an independent excluded from, and they'll come in and do their own. And, um, usually if it's, if you, you know, if you have a single audit, it's directed towards a certain item, you know? If you can, if it, if you have a state auditor come in and do an audit of the whole city, you know, that it's gonna cost you a ton, ton, a ton of money. So usually if somebody's concerned about something like that, I, I suggest that you get an audit committee and you look at specific areas that are the concerns, not just saying the whole city is a concern. Because the whole city's not a concern. It may be an isolated event and you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna end up breaking the whole city because you gotta pay for a state audit, you know, so...
So that being said, I've heard people say, well, it costs a lot of money. And you said a ton, a ton, a ton. Approximately, what is they, you know?
I can't even tell you. I can't, I can't even tell you because I don't bill what they, you know, I don't have any idea how they charge. I just know that, you know, it's a lot of money in relation to what people are used to paying for an audit, so, I mean...
Okay.
Could be in the three, you know, six digits. I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I've seen it all, all different ranges, so, you know, it's just hard to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion, we'll call for it.
Lamar?
Are we voting to approve the audit? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
What was submitted for the audit? The report, right? We're approving her report of it.
Her verbal-
Yeah, we, 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 I asked that we just hear her version, Cliff Notes version of it, but yes. I am not opposed to tabling it until it's fully read, but...
Right, that's what I'm asking. I think we're gonna be arguing the entire report.
You're approving the entire-
Well, I don't know. You've done this million times.
It's, it's always been just like this and we, we've gone through it. If she had a problem-
If this is approved, we, then we'll be, well, not me, but they will file it with the state auditor's office who has called me more than once, wondering where our report is. And we also have funding for the street department that gets held up until this is turned in as well.
Mr. Colker?
The, our report really is her report to you as far as how the accounting went. Whether you approve it or not, it's not gonna change. Alright, so I mean, you can approve it now or you can approve it later. It'll still be the same report. And she, what she does, she comes in and checks all the accounting and all the records, make sure. She basically takes the work that my office did and the report that you have is basically our, what we write and she writes the letters and she checks the numbers to make sure that they're accurate, relative, you know, not a hundred percent pure accurate, but reasonably accurate. And she gives her opinion. And that's what those letters are. Those are opinions on what she has done. Approving it now, fine. Approving it later, fine. I'm gonna make her come back because it's not fair to her. But, uh, the report will still be the same regardless of...
You, you got your findings, so that's your findings. That's, that's the way it is. It's not gonna change.
If something else were to be found for some other reason at some other time, I mean, that would have no effect on this, right?
Her job is done.
So we're paying, we're paying twice, two different people for the same information, is that-
So we're paying, we're paying twice, two different people for the same information, is that?
He does it, she checks it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I take the books. I'm supposedly the expert because people who are not necessarily understand full government accounting, rules of GAAP, and all that stuff, and I guess I do. So I, I prepare, I get her numbers, and I prepare this report for the auditor to come in. I make the general entry. I get the books ready to be audited in the shape that they need to be in in order to be checked. And then she comes in and she checks my work. And so basically, this is not only a, I guess, a stamp of approval on the city's accounting, but my work as well, otherwise you would say something wrong.
Well, I trust you. I trust your opinion. So if that's what you recommend. Some of us don't go by what you recommend all the time, but I think I'll go with it.
Well, to add to what Jeff's saying, a few years back, what's it been, about seven years when Gatsby 34 came in? And we had to, you had to split the accounting from the audit. Used to-
That was seven years. That's probably-
Uh, time goes by too fast. But anyway, a point, a point came and they said, you know, people, you could do the accounting and go around and, and go on and do the audit. Well, they said you have to have a set of financial statements to do the audit. So if we came in and just took what Lisa has, we'd have to put all these things together and make a financial statement, and we would impair our independence. And so that's why Jeff has to do what he does. That's why I have to do what I do.
And I appreciate that system. I'd just like, before I approve anything, have a chance to look at it, just like you had to look at it. It's a checks and balances. I don't like being in the habit of approving something that my board expects me to understand before I vote on it. And that's why I would like to read it.
I'm going to throw this, just to speed this discussion out. What do you guys think happens if you vote no?
We'll have to come back and ask questions.
Nothing is the answer.
On this, nothing.
He just said the report's not going to change after we read it and look at it, so.
To even speed it up further, and maybe this just gets the point across. The point of voting no is so that we have the documents that we need before council meeting. And in any vote in defiance of this report is simply stating that.
That's fair.
To speed it up even further, we've already called for the votes. We shouldn't have had any of this discussion.
We called for the vote? Or we called for the vote for the table?
No, we called for the vote for this, and I asked for Lamar, and then everybody asked questions.
Okay.
To be fair, he asked the first question.
Yes, I did.
While reporting.
So a yes vote approves it?
Madam City Clerk?
Thank you.
I vote yes to approve the document.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Gauthier?
No.
Smith?
No.
Passes four to three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, at this point, we're going to go to the addendum. We're going to skip around tonight.
I, I thought we were going to do the public hearing.
We'll hit the addendum real quick and then public hearing since that party didn't make it through. So, addendum item one, discussion of possible action to close, to close Graham Avenue from Hogan to Adair Street for homecoming parade on Thursday evening, September 26, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 7:30.
So moved.
I'll second.
So can I just ask, could I get the whole sentence out before we do that?
We're in hurry.
Who's the motion in second?
Chris and Kenneth.
Chris, Chris had it. Kenneth had the second. I, I know, but let's not rush it. Discussion, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Discussion of possible action to close Adair Street from Graham Avenue to Northeast First Street for Prior Main Street Festival on Thursday evening, September 26, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Gauthier and a second from Brishir.
Um, there's a Scrivener's there. It needs to be Southeast First, so if we could have an amended motion to correct that.
I'll make that reflection.
And I'll, uh, same here.
If no further discussion, call for the vote.
Uh, Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item three, discussion of possible action to approve mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Prior Creek and GovCard Evolve to provide credit card processing services for payments made to the general fund. Services provided will allow the city to accept payments both in person and online.
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion from Choya and a second from Bradshaw. I'd like to allow Courtney to explain this to the council.
I told Terry Lamar very excitedly earlier that I was super excited to tell you guys about this. So I don't know if you guys have ever been on OML's website. It's really hard to navigate sometimes. You can Google something, but if you just go to their website, it's hard to find some stuff sometimes. Anyway, I was looking for something and I randomly found that they offer this service to city governments that participate in their program, and we do. So we're part of OML's membership. Anyway, they offer, it's some kind of contract they have with GovCard that allows city governments to have credit card processing without having to pay fees for that. We currently pay quite a bit of fees. I budgeted about 5,000. Having the, the, the customer pay the, you know, those credit card fees help some, but there are still fees that we have to pay on top of that. Uh, moving to this company eliminates all of that. There's a $200 one-time setup fee, and that's just to get the website designed, that they go and pay online. And then there's a $200 fee for me to buy a USB card reader. I don't expect to need more than one unless that he throws a fit and wants one, but that's the only other person I can see that would need one. Uh, so that's what this is. There's two different items because we need two physical bank accounts to be tied to, so we have to have two separate contracts. One is for all of our things here, and then our court bond payments are completely separate, which is a separate line items.
Is it all tied into one contract?
No, there should be two items. There should be two contracts.
There's, there's Intellipay and then there's Evolve.
Uh, yes. So Intellipay is what powers, it's GovPay is the, or GovCard, sorry, is the company, it's the logo that they use, the name that they use, I had to get explanation on this myself, for the government entities. Evolve is the company that is providing this, and Intellipay is the company that actually processes the cards. But it's all one agreement for Evolve.
Okay, I just, I only have the one for the general fund. I didn't have one for the court. And this one is about the general fund. Okay. And it's probably the same contract. I'm not-
It's the exact same thing, just one word has changed.
I did have some questions about it. So like on page two, it says the open date is 1/1/1898?
That is the city, when the city was first started.
Okay.
That's the date that she wanted to type in, so.
And then on, we checked yes for seasonal sales?
Uh, I filled these out with her over the phone, so she must have missed them.
I, I just didn't know if it was seasonal or all year.
Yeah, we do all.
Okay. It might be something we need to correct. And then page three, we didn't check anything whether we wanted a paper statement or not. Page four, um, sorry, not that one. On their terms and conditions. It says, number five, it's the initial term of five years from the date of first authorized transaction. And I don't think that we can legally contract that.
We're not paying anything for this?
We can't contract anything past a year.
The only issue with the contracts is for expending future year funds.
I know. I don't think we can contact, make a contract at all for one year to the next.
Yes.
Is that in the packet?
Yes. You want to print out?
It would be page 11 of the, I believe, right? Yeah, 11 of the packets.
Have you had a chance to review this contract?
No, I had a meeting with him yesterday, which is why it was on the addendum.
I'm extremely uncomfortable having a 20 something page contract that our attorney hasn't even looked at yet.
It's in the, in the packet, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But Councilman Tyler's cheaper than him at $200 an hour to review the contract, so we're getting a better deal right here.
Yeah, but he doesn't have the legal clout. He won't be representing.
You said the, the major benefit to this had to do with processing fees, right?
Uh, so the processing fees we add, we charge back to the customer. But the current credit card company and most credit card companies have their own fees. One for PCI compliance, just a normal contract fee typically for us to use their services. There's all kinds of other fees that companies will charge on top of that. Um, for example, not necessarily the line item, but the court bond account. We paid $12 last month for having that service. We didn't swipe one single card for that bond account.
Okay. And, uh, do you have an idea what those service charges are? I know they get flipped onto the-
Not all of them get flipped to the customer. We charge a 3.5% fee to the customer for using the cards to cover those fees. I could get your reports, but.
All right, well, just like average, that's what the percentage is, is roughly, that we, well, just because I see, you know, there's a one, there's a $1.75 below $60 per transaction.
We charge 3.5% to every single customer. They actually have a cheaper rate that they would charge. So the $1.75 thing that you're seeing is what the customer would be, would be charged instead of the 3.5. We can add the 3.5 in there. They can change their settings to where we charge every single person 3.5%, 3.5% to use the card fee. But I didn't see the point in that one. It's cheaper if we use them up to the 3.5% that we've been approved for.
So basically, it's cheaper for who, basically what you're saying is it's cheaper for whoever's paying the fee.
Right. Yeah, that-
And that's the main point.
$1.75 or the percentage is what's given to the customer when they swipe their card.
And while the attorneys over there are figuring this out, Courtney, I asked Courtney, and she told me that this does not apply to the rec center. They're on a, on separate account.
They are.
And they just went out for a contract, for a new contract for their service? Is that right?
Yeah, they got a new credit card company and then new software a couple of months ago.
And it's not a free one like this one is?
No, not.
How much software are we going to have to buy for this little deal?
Nothing. We signed the contract. I buy the, the credit card reader and they build the website, and I'll have it in 10 days.
And they're cheaper than what we're doing?
They're free without the, other than the $200 website.
We're going to catch it somewhere.
$200 website design first time thing, that's the only thing we have to pay other than me buying a card reader. And that's not a requirement. It just makes our lives easier up here for the person needing to swipe their card.
This is one of the benefits of being a member of the Oakland Municipal League. It's one of the bennies that you get for paying.
They do not offer, and I actually did, I've been doing demos for credit card companies for a little while. And I actually did one with Intellipay, and they were not cheap whatsoever. I didn't even include them in my future references because I did not want to deal with what their costs were. But we're getting this at a government rate because of our membership with OML.
It sounds great, but I'll make a motion that we table this till next meeting so that the attorney can look at it and anybody else that wants to look at it. Can you?
If you need an opinion from me, I need time to look at it.
I, I have no problem with it. My only problem would be is if we agree to something that we can't legally do, then the contract is void to begin with. Would that be accurate?
Potentially, yeah.
And so I just want to make sure that when we sign a contract, it, it's going to be binding.
Right.
How sick is, sounds like a good idea.
Motion.
That being said, it'd be at Arpa.
I'm sorry.
If it's voided. But before I give an opinion, I need to look at it.
So we have a motion from Gauthier to table.
And a second from Bruce.
I'm going to need a date.
Ma'am?
We're going to need a date. You have to table it.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. You didn't say that before. You just said table.
I did. It just, there were several people talking probably here.
So we're going to cut this banter. This is not, not, not necessary.
Who's the second?
The second was verse Smith. We'll table it for the next meeting. You ready? Call for the vote.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action to approve mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Prior Creek, GovCard Evolve to provide credit card processing services for the court, court bond payments. Services provided will allow the city to accept payments in person and online.
Motion to table to next meeting.
There it goes.
I have a motion from Gauthier and a second from Bruce. Table it for the next meeting.
Which, just for everybody else's note, is October 1st. Am I good to call?
Yeah, go ahead and call for the vote.
Brown?
You write that down.
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
At this point, we are going to, um, ready, again, sorry, we're going back and forth. We're going to go back to the mayor's report, item S. Once we finish the mayor's report, we'll go to item five, and then we will go back to the top of the mayor's report with the remaining items. Discussion of possible action regarding city-owned property at North Elliot Street and Clayton Road. Request cited by Brown, Lamar, and Smith.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Smith and a second from Brishir.
I drafted this for it to be on the agenda, so I guess I can speak with what limited knowledge I have. But I think Ms. Lavalley is here. If she was, is willing to speak, it might be good. It's my understanding that at some point in the last 10 days, that the lock on city property at this address, the gate was shut and locked. Um, I think that there was some level of, I don't know, it was vandalism or what was going on out there.
We got a call out there of a vehicle that, you know, was suspicious. Went out there, Trent went out there. I think he saw it out there. Um, there were two younger people. They were up to no good. Talked to them for a while. They really didn't have a reason to be there. Trent, I guess in the past, had dealt with people, some people that were, traded, staying out there and stuff. He said that gate used to be locked, so he locked it when he went out. I received a phone call, I think from Mr. Trammell about it. Um, I referred him to Zach. You know, I mean, I'm open to whatever. Um, I guess there was some issue with people needing out there. I said, it's no issue. We'll lock the gate. That's not a problem. Here's why we locked it, so. Um, it's an area that you can't see. Once you go back in there, I mean, people could do whatever they want to do. There's a lot of acres back there. Um, it's high grass, trees. Just a liability thing is the kind of way we looked at it on the city was the reason Trent said that gate used to be locked. So that's the reason it was locked. It was not to keep anybody out as far as that was doing good things. It was to keep people from up to no good out there. So that was the reason it was locked originally.
Mayor, you didn't order it locked?
Nope. So, no, I did not. Um, in fact, and I apologize to Ms. Lavalley who was traveling the same weekend as the Bluegrass Festival, so for those that were not a part of the three days, four days of that Bluegrass Festival, there was a lot of time and effort and energy put into that. So we were stretched pretty thin. And so the, the, the issue that we have with this property is that there is a tremendous amount of land up there. Give just a minute and then I'll call up if, if we decide to. Thank you, thank you. There's a lot going on on this property. This is the 169 acres that was donated by the rocking G, Mr. Giles, for, for his, uh, his donation to the city. When, when Mr. Giles was asked by myself a few years ago what his vision of that land was, his words were simple. Um, and this was as we drove out to the middle of the property, up behind the, the east pond, uh, behind the passmore, the old passmore home. Uh, he buried his truck in the mud that day and he said, well, I guess we're walking, but to answer your question, uh, I donated this so that kids would have a place to play off the streets. With that, I think it's developed into, a lot of hard work has gone into that property. We see a lot of effort being put in that, not only by, by Ms. Lavalley and her groups that have done a great job with maintaining designated areas on that, whether it be the, the wildscape, which we, I think we provided you some signs for that, correct? Those, those brown signs that I gave you when you came to my office last June.
I gave those to you.
Okay, so, um, those are in the drawer there. I have more if you'd like more of those. Those were left when I took office, but the point is, uh, we've also discussed, uh, the Butterfly Way Station, which is up by, closer to the animal shelter. And it, just for reference on that, Mr. Hester, James Hester, bails that. Do you know Mr. Hester? He's, he's the- You know Mr. Hester? He's, he's the nicest guy in the world that you could run into. And I think it was July 31st was the date that was given that we, we wait till after July 31st to, to have that bailed and mowed because of the migration of the butterflies. And so at Ms. Lavalley's request, I've done everything to try to call and make sure that we're good on that. And I appreciate her, her being a part of that. I appreciate what's going on on that. The, the bigger vision of that land is that I think as we all work to create a place that, that has, has nature, long, long story put, brings nature to the community. Kathy and her teams, I think you had some individuals from Google that came out and did some work. That's great. They appreciate it. You've planted a, what did, what did you call that? A liberty tree?
It's a survivor tree.
A survivor tree. I'm sorry. I always, it's got a flag on it, so.
Yes. And, and there's actually, there's some other, yes, it's a survivor.
The concern is, is that when we see, in all fairness to, to not be degrading in my description, when we see transient individuals back there that are not taking care of that property, law enforcement does go and they do run them off. We've had reports before where they left their trash. They, they tore up the properties and things. So rightfully so, law enforcement goes and runs them off. And I think in this instance, like Chief said, Terry, not, I'm looking at Terry, I'm sorry, Trent. Trent Humphreys, Officer Humphreys, went out and pulled that gate shut as he ran them off. So the call was made, get the, get the gate unlocked, get it open. That's been done. But we want to make sure that we, we throw out also the caution that this is wildlife. This is, some of that grass in some of those areas is unkempt. And I've seen places that are, you know, door high, which would be about chest high. We know that there are, there are wild animals out there. There are snakes and there are water moccasins. And there are, of course, all the little things, ticks and bugs. So, you know, as we go through this, if you're gonna be on that property, know that there's an element of your own risk because it is unkempt. We want to support and continue to support the efforts that Kathy and her, her comrades have done. And so, you know, I, I think this is, this is good to throw out there that the recognition is given for that. We've talked about how we want, how we're gonna go forward protecting that from the transient individuals that go out there and unfortunately don't have the same respect for that land that others do. So going forward, we'll work with Ms. Lavalley, make sure she has access to that. Make sure that communication doesn't break down in any way, shape, or form.
And I was there on that call. I actually heard Trent out there the other guy was tied up. I followed him. I went out there, turned around, came out to shut the gate. There was no top of Zach when he shut locked the gate. So Zach wasn't even involved in that point of it. So there was no malicious intent. And it actually turned out it wouldn't even see locked. It was a mud lock. Some mud had been locked in that before. That's what, I guess, had happened. So Zach wasn't even involved in that conversation.
What I'd like to do is leave that gate. I mean, locking the gate is not gonna accomplish anything. I haven't seen any transients or homeless people driving vehicles, so that's probably not gonna affect anything.
Well, I'm not saying they aren't. I'm saying they're walking back there.
And locking the gate was foolish. When I drove in the other side, no restriction, drove all the way to the locked gate. So that's not accomplishing anything except keeping her out. Leave the gate open. Let her do her thing and let's go on about our business.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, Bruce, you know, and, and that's where we're at with this is that, again, we have to recognize that it was an officer just doing what he perceived to be, to do his best judgment. And as Chief said, there was no malicious intent. There was no attempt to keep any particular group or individual out of there. They ran them off, pulled the gate shut. And so as we, as we go forward, these are just things that are, are just good conversations to have that, you know, we are appreciative of what Ms. Lavalley and her group has done. And so we want to make sure that those, those recognitions are given where they do. Going forward, we have Dr. Robert Neeran, who is a decorated professor from OU, who will be bringing out his, his teams later this fall, hopefully, to help create ecoscapes and wildlifescapes out there so that when that's declared an ecoscape, GRDA can then start working with the streams and the wells that are out there to make sure that there's a thing. Why are we doing all that? Because that creates the opportunity for funding for outdoor classrooms, for creating a trail system. Hope is, and the Trails Alliance has been an integral part of trying to find funds to create trailways out there so that handicap access could be given to kids that can maybe go back to those ponds and fish, just like everybody else. Again, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of work to make that happen. My desire is, is that we all work together to meet Tom Giles' vision of providing a place for our kids to, to be off of the streets. But what a better way to do that than getting that declared conservation land with the properties with proper, proper, proper efforts put to, to make that the right way. And I think that that's what we're seeing through those, through those efforts of the groups that are there. So, you know, we can, we can go on and on about the gate being locked. Obviously, that was unintentional. There was no malicious, it was intentional, but it wasn't intentional to cause any malicious. So for that, again, Kathy, we thank you for what you're doing out there. Thank you for the time and effort that you've put into that. And hopefully, going forward, things are, are smooth for you.
Mayor? Mayor? Is it locked right now?
No.
It's not.
Okay.
No, that call was made, what, last, last weekend?
They unlocked it Friday morning and I had googlers arrive at eight o'clock Friday morning. So it was unlocked in time to get the googlers.
And it's still unlocked?
It was a mud lock. So we had to do it in mud to get them out there to lock it.
So the call, the call was made to get that unlocked and get it unlocked so she could get in there.
Is there any issue? If, if it was to stay locked, is there any issue having, with her having a key?
No, 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 no. This is public land. It's not, I have to go there and water trees.
That, that is the whole point of this is that...
Let, let me just say that this property has been sitting there since 2005.
Ms. Kathy, could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
This, this property has sat there since 2005. The city has not done anything with it except bail it once, maybe twice a year. And so finally in 2022, I ask if, if the city would let me have a portion of that land to do a wildscape. Under Larry Lee's administration, they gave me 17 acres. There have always been homeless people back there. If you think the homeless community is new to Pryor, it's not. They've always been living out there at the creek. And here's what I've learned about the homeless population, is that they leave their trash unless you put a trash can out. And then they put their trash in the trash can. And I go load it up about once every two weeks and I take it to my trash and, and, and then we start all over. You know, if, if, if we're not going to allow vehicles through that area, then there needs to be signage. There needs to be something that says foot tra, foot traffic only. There needs to be some rules. But just to exclude, because people are doing what people do, people dump trash in the city park. You know, they dumped trash all over Pryor. I don't mind going out there and picking it up. It's not a big deal. But it should not be excluded from the public. Giving me a key is not solving any problems. I can jump the fence. The fence has been laying over for the last 20 years. There are trees growing in the fence line that are getting ready to go into the power lines. Nobody takes care of that property. And, and literally, I can walk over the fence. So giving me a key is not solving any problems. I, I would like to really start using that property for hikes and for, I'd like to do a midnight hike this year. I'd like, you know, I have a lot of plans just for that area. But, but we can't do that if the public's locked out of it. So that's all I can say.
Ms. Lavalley, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If we were to install, I know you drive your four wheeler through there, but if we were to install a gate that was wide enough to allow your four wheeler, but not a vehicle, unless you were gonna have planned visits out there where there's gonna be multiple cars, is that going to cause a, a problem for you?
There, there would never be a reason to have multiple cars. We have that big parking area.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's more enough room, but it's, in case there wasn't, I mean, at that point, could we lock that gate and have a smaller accessible gate?
Sure.
Would that not serve both needs?
That, that would not be a problem.
I understand Bruce is saying that you can drive from the other side. Typically, people don't. But if that, if that would solve the police's need to keep it protected and, but also your need to go in there and take care of things, it seems like it would be a reasonable.
You can always come around the backside at the shelter.
Or through the animal.
Like Bruce did.
Yes.
And, and drive through.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody does that or that knows, well, I know you do. Bruce has been around this.
There's a lot of solutions, but...
I'm gonna, let me, give me two seconds.
Okay.
I'm not going to endorse or recommend that you drive your car back there. Bruce has a fairly tall, heavy-duty truck.
Oh, you can't make it across some of those paths without a four wheeler.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want anybody to get out there and think that their Honda Accord is gonna make it through there. People want to come rescue you.
I drive a mule, so.
Also additionally to that, like I said before, please understand that there are water moccasins out there. There are snakes. And there are no defined, defined mode trails that are, are long run through that property. So if you get back there, understand that there's an element of risk that you take at this point. Not saying no.
No, I'm just saying, we suggest that you wait until after the first hard freeze before you explore the property. I mean, it's because even being out there with the googlers and spraying ourselves down, I, I was covered in seed tick. I mean, it's just, it happens.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Absolutely, Bruce.
Leave the gate open. Put a sign up that says day use only.
Or foot traffic only.
Or a sign that says, no camping.
We've had that discussion. Not you and I, but we've had that discussion, yeah.
Tyler, Trent, Jeremy, and myself, I work for GRDA. GRDA has land that you can't camp on. You patrol it, you find them, you remove them. You don't lock up the boat ramps and shut the lake down because somebody was in there camping. So we're gonna have to do some patrolling and watching. If you've got it open for vehicles, the likelihood of somebody camping and doing anything and getting seen is gonna be less. And so I think I'd cure the whole problem. Just leave it alone, put the signs up and go on about our business.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, I've got a couple of things. It sounds to me like the plan for this, I'm gonna generically call it that it's probably gonna be some sort of thing that would belong under Frank, the park department. Is that correct? In the long run, and eventually?
Frank would probably be retired before then, right?
Because it is a...
Maybe someday, but there...
Yes, but it's got a kind of, or some department. But I know that Ms. Lavalley works hard to go out there and maintain this. And she has volunteers. And she goes out in the evenings. She goes out on the weekends. She needs, the bottom line is, and I'm the one that talked to Tyler Brown about this, about getting on the agenda, so I'm gonna throw it out here. The bottom line is, this council needs to ensure that she has unimpeded access to that facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whether she's, whether it's locked and she's got a key to get in it or not, or the gate's left open. The bottom line is, as a council, I want her to have unimpeded access to that property 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
I agree. And she wants access for the public.
And, and I would like...
In maintaining it. But she maintains it.
Kathy's not out there after the freeze. She's out there during the summer when it's hot.
No, I'm being sarcastic.
Okay.
So what I would like to see out of this is an official vote of this body that I, I said to give her unimpeded access, whatever that may be.
Or just to keep the gates open until, you know, something else.
I think at this point, I mean, we've discussed the gate.
Who gave who the signs? The brown signs? Who gave who the brown signs?
I pulled them out of my drawer back there, so.
So they, so I gave them to Mr. Lee's. See, when I...
That's a game changer, Kathy.
Yes. And they were covering up the receipts from the engineer packet.
So, so I was, when I got the certification for the wildscape, I received those signs. I brought them to Mr. Lee's. He put them in his bottom drawer. You then gave me one back.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where we are.
And I told you, I have more if you want them.
I don't.
You want more?
I, I want real signs up there. But Jamie's working on that. We're, we're working on getting real signs put up, not the plastic ones.
And again, we're going to respect the requests for the migration stuff, all of that. That's all part of that.
And you have.
And as we go forward, we've also talked with the other entities that we're bringing into this conversation that those areas are gonna stay where they're at. They're gonna stay protected. And eventually, if this does come to fruition, as we've discovered with these outdoor classroom, those will be integral parts of, of that. They'll be their own independent classrooms. So, you know.
If, if I might ask, I, I am planning on some, some hikes after the first freeze, a midnight hike because I think that's cool. There's all kinds of critters. And do I need somebody's approval to do that every time I schedule a hike?
I don't think you need approval. I think just maybe let somebody at City Hall know, hey, we're doing a hike this night.
Okay.
You'll have, you'll have a group of people out there.
Yes, okay.
That way we just know. And it's like I told Terry the other day when we had this conversation. Just like, you know, if I know somebody's coming to my lawn, I just want to know they're there.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll let you know.
Who, who made the motion?
Idea.
Well, no.
Smith made the motion. Brishers?
So would it be appropriate to amend the motion that the gate stays open so that that access is...
That's fine with me.
Well, technically, the agenda item is discussion of possible action, but no action is stated in the agenda item. So you guys are gonna have to define it.
I'm, I'm curious.
You leave the gate open.
I'm curious if we can't...
Right, it's gonna have to be defined.
Leave it open for public access, but I would like us to consider putting a walk or a small drive-through gate to meet the police department's request of keeping vehicular traffic out of there, but still allowing you and other pedestrians to, to access it as needed.
As long as it's big enough for my mule. I do a lot of watering.
Respectfully, we could also put up a, an element of risk sign because it is unkempt.
I, I think there needs to be some signage. I, I do. I mean, it's kind of...
Want somebody in a Honda Accord thinking they're gonna get out there and make it all the way to the animal shelter.
And, and, and a previous mayor put nature trail signs out there, but then he also allowed leg traps on the trails.
Tyler, I see no reason to put the lock that gate, put a, a vehicle gate in it when you go the other end driving all the way.
Well, maybe not. I'm just trying to meet some middle ground for the police department as well as to have some level of security of keeping the cars out of there. But at, at a minimum, somebody, leave it open to access.
At this point, we need to either amend the motion to take an action or we need to just move forward.
Any of these things, do we have to take an action or a vote?
Wait, why do we have to amend anything? We're still having discussion about possible action.
I think that's what I'm getting at, is what are we, where are we going with it?
We want to leave the gate open, I think.
Yeah, that's what I...
But do we need to, do we need to vote on anything?
And did you amend your motion?
I forgot where we're at.
You made the original motion?
I made the motion that we leave the gate open.
Okay.
So, so while they're thinking about it, I will let you all know that there is a survivor tree planted out there. Please don't come pull it up because somebody stepped up to me once. But it is a survivor tree from the Oakland City Bobby Memorial. And, and we've taken special care to make sure that it, it thrives. And so it's, it's gonna be cool. We want a whole native area out there. So if you have any native trees to donate, you have my number.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the motion?
Smith made a motion to amend to leave the gate open. Brishers, would you like to second that again?
Let's do it, yes.
And I would like the language in the motion, again, that Ms. Lavalley has unimpeded access to this facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as needed for, as needed for...
Care.
Care-taking.
Care-taking.
So are you making a third motion?
I'm good.
No, I meant, this is amended to that.
But you didn't make that motion, so you can't add to it. They would have to.
He was asking that they would do it.
Yes, I was talking about the, the meaning to include that language.
Yeah, I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you get all of that, Courtney?
I'm working on it.
Whenever you're ready.
I did that. Gantier says, hey, you didn't do something right. Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, David, and Richard. Item T, discussion of possible action regarding any budget presented. I'm sorry.
Were you gonna go back to something else after four S? I thought you said you were going to do something else after four S before the rest of it.
No, we're gonna plow down through these last four and then we'll go to public hearing.
Okay.
We're gonna plow through these last four and then we'll move forward. Discussion of possible action regarding any budget presented is subject to line item changes or adjustments prior to approval by the council, requests submitted by Gonthea, Smith, and Brown.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Gonthea and a second from Smith.
No, that's fine.
So, um, you guys already do this. I don't know why I told Gonthea this whenever I called him, because it was submitted by him first, but you guys already go through line item, through this line item by line item, Budget Committee gets the, the ability to do that too and change every single account number, account, I'm sorry, account balance, everything that is budgeted before you approve by the council.
So what you're saying is you have no problem if we pass this?
It doesn't, I'm just saying.
It's already working.
You're already doing it, whether it's on the agenda or not.
This is precaution.
I'm just letting you know that you already had that authority prior to putting this item on the agenda.
Yeah, the authority's already there to do it.
You could, you could move stuff around inside of a, of a need from line item to line item, inside of a, of an area there without having any problems as long as the, as totals don't change, correct, Mayor?
Correct, but I think what they're referring to is that when the budget is presented, that it be subject to a line item change or adjustment prior to approval by council.
Rather than just saying we're gonna approve the 201 budget and only being able to say the bulk total.
Right, so like, three weeks ago when we went through the 201 budget, that was kinda how we did that.
Basically, if you guys wanted to change my 209, 501-1 account to five dollars instead of what's written on the budget presented to you, you have the ability to do that when you're talking about fund 209, or, I'm sorry, um, my, yeah.
Correct.
My 209 thing, you have the ability to do that already without this agenda item being placed on the agenda. It's just a pointless agenda item, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for your opinion, but we wanted to ensure that we would be able to do so.
Okay.
Call for the vote, please, thank you.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes, it's already there.
Thank you. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gonthea?
Yes.
Item U, discussion of possible action regarding at any time during the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, if general fund expenses exceed received revenues, the council must approve the expenditures prior to incurring the indebtedness. Request submitted by Gonthea, Smith, Brown.
Move. No motion.
No motion from Brishir?
Second.
Second from Gonthea.
So this means?
If we don't have the money to cover the budgeted items, we have to approve it. This year, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars more than what actually came in. This is just to make sure that this tentative budget that we're presented, presenting whenever we do approve one, if it's not fully funded, before we just keep approving things 'cause it's in the budget, to make sure the money is there to cover it.
How do you expect to, to verify this for day-to-day things?
If there's a line, well, I mean, if, if you know that we are halfway through the year and we only have forty percent of the revenue brought in, there's a problem, so it's not that hard.
So, it is actually, because if the revenues exceed, I'm sorry, if the expenditures exceed the revenues on any given financial statement, that's for the entire financial statement or the general fund. But if you're saying, hey, this is exceeding this, then technically that means that we cannot spend a single dime, including employee salaries, until it's approved by council.
You can't buy a battery for a truck.
You can't do a single thing.
Until it's approved by council.
Until it's approved by council because the expenditures have exceeded the revenues. There's no way for me to drill down outside of that because we are sales tax-based. There's no way for me to say, okay, this account number has this much revenue and this much expenditures because our revenue is put into one thing and dispersed via the budget to the other line item.
If, if we have collectively spent six million dollars, three months into the budget year, and we've only collected three million dollars, we got a problem, this is to stop that. It's not saying, you know, all this kind of stuff.
I can't backdate this expense that already occurred, it's, any future expenses to occur would now have to start being approved by us. That is what.
That's fine, but, so, say that happens and we have payroll to do the week after that. We can't technically do payroll because that comes out of every single department in the general fund. There's no way to break down the revenue to a specific department.
We have to keep our spending in line, are we gonna bankrupt the city and we have?
Chris, can, can we get Mr. Coker's input on this as our accountant?
I'm confused, I'm not sure, uh, are you saying?
Chris is saying, if we, if we get our monthly financials and we are over our projected budget to that point in the year, at that point, we stop spending anything else until it's been approved by the council.
Over our projected budget or over our projected revenue?
Over the revenue.
So, the problem partly is you don't know what your revenues are for the month until sometimes halfway through the month. So, what do you do for the first half of the month? I don't know, I see these are questions I'm not sure I understand. You know, I, I understand the concept that you're trying to control the expenditures, but I do see some problems like automatic expenses, you know, utilities, I mean, are you going to just say, okay, we're not paying the utility bill? If we're over, so you, you're gonna have, there's gonna be a logistic problem, I think.
Well, could we amend it for the payroll and utilities? But then let it apply to other?
I, the, I agree with the, the mindset behind this, we wanna make sure because of the state of the finances and we don't know what's gonna happen over the next year. I'm struggling to, I wanna find a log, a logistical way to implement, is what I'm trying to think about, so.
Find it.
How are we logistically, when Mub has to be paid or when payroll has to cut or when, you know, our, our insurance, whatever expenses that are already set in place that we have to pay.
Your health insurance, your pensions, they gotta be paid in, your payroll taxes have to be paid in.
What the idea is, I think, for my part, is to give us a safety net. Last year, our accountant, Mr. Coker, said, if you wanna survive, if you want carryover, you will cut a hundred thousand a month. We did not cut a hundred thousand a month and overspent six hundred and eighty thousand. If we continue those practices of not listening to him, we're gonna be doing month to month. That's my fear, that's why we're trying to protect us.
Right, and I'm, I'm trying to think of logistically how to implement something like this.
Jeff?
I, I'd have to put some thought to it, you're asking me off the top of my head, 'cause this is the first I've heard of it. It would be somewhat difficult to, to handle this because most, a lot of your expenses are what I would call automatic.
Mr. Coker, when we take our budget.
Yes.
Whatever we budget this year.
Yeah.
We, we spend however much we spend.
Yes.
And then next year, we spend however much we spend.
Yes.
And we're out of reserves at that point, what happens?
Well, you either, okay, if you don't do anything, one, you'll be waiting for money to come in.
We will be in this process, essentially, correct?
Well, you, but you'll, you'll have an empty bank account at that point.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, uh, of course, I, I estimated in two years, based upon current spending and the revenues at that time, if you were six hundred thousand, you had one point, some million carryover. So I, I figured two years on that, so we're not quite at that point yet. But eventually, I mean, obviously, if you continue and nothing happens.
We will be waiting on our revenues before we can pay our expenditures, is what we, and I think, I think the point of this is, how do we create a checks and balance that says, if we're over, what are we gonna do to correct?
We know we're gonna be behind, uh, the type of money coming in, expenses going out, but there's a, two months later, can we say, whoa, let's stop where we're at, or? How you do that?
Well. The same way probably that you did with the hiring freeze, when that first came on, you have some type of spending freeze maybe that happens later if that becomes an issue, but do we need to preemptively do this now when? I mean, I don't even know what that looks like either, but, I mean.
How many years in a row have we overspent more than what our budget, what, what, what came in revenue-wise? How many years in a row have we overspent that you know of?
I'm guessing.
For real?
And if that trend continues.
Well, and, and can we also, just for disclosure as well, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's two-sided. One side is, we have expenditures. The other side is, is sales tax revenues are not, are not meeting our budget, what we, but, we, we can put a budget out there, but we are guessing over the next twelve months, we're estimating what we might bring in.
Right.
And that's what our budget is set on, but we don't know if the funding is gonna actually come in for that, so it's.
Well, it could be more, it could be less, that's why you'd budget ninety percent.
Right.
Yeah, so it's safer that way and trying to budget a hundred or a hundred and ten percent.
So, so the concern is not, in and of itself, it's not just overspending. It's, is the funding coming in to fund what we've already budgeted?
Right.
We hear, well, that position's budgeted, that expense is budgeted, that expense is budgeted, but at the same time, if the, the sales tax, uh, dispersions are not keeping up with it each month, then that's the second issue.
Your, your revenues have been relatively flat, so they've, they've been fairly consistent. Sales tax went up last year, but other income went down a little bit, so basically.
But the, the other problem with that too is a lot of our basic expenditures are going up.
Yes, that's been the problem, is your expenditures have increased, especially before this, this last year, they, they went up. And then it's hard to make them go down unless you do something.
According to Ms. Wilson, how much so far, starting in July, have we received and have we spent?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Well, we've asked that already, uh, that's what I think that Councilman, uh.
Trammell?
Trammell asked for, and you was too busy to get it.
No.
No, I'll read you your email if you want me to read it back out here in Oakland.
Hang on.
I have issues with Cassell that I have been too busy to be able to fix. I'm not too busy to get the numbers that he needs.
We kinda need him to die.
And we've had plenty of things going on, including fixing the budget four different times before I can even get to the Cassell issues to close my financials. But, the item on the agenda is for you guys to, not the way you guys have worded it, essentially amend our purchasing policy to, which is what you guys should do if you want something like this, is amend our purchasing policy to either remove the five hundred dollar spending limit the department heads have or make every purchase that is not required or isn't already going to happen, something that comes to council. You're trying to do that, but that's the only way that you're gonna be able to do something like this, is to amend the purchasing policy because this again is going against the rules that you guys already set by ordinance.
But.
Jeff, hang on.
I read the ordinance twice, this is permissible.
Jeff.
Amending the purchase policy would probably be the easiest way.
Here's what I would recommend, after hearing what Jeff says, and Chris and I talked about this quite a bit on the phone. What do you, well, he's explained what he's trying to do, it makes perfect sense what he's trying to do. You wanna make sure whatever you do, we don't run into, one, miscommunicate, misinterpretation is probably a good word, similar to the hiring freeze. Everyone can remember every time someone tried to do something with the hiring freeze, because all this was done, was done on a minute in the agenda. So, what Chris and I have talked about is, can we do a resolution? After seeing the purchasing limit thing become an issue earlier in the meeting and hearing Jeff just, I was thinking this and when he just said that, that's why I'm speaking up. I think the best thing would be to do, if ordinance, amending two, one, three, your purchasing policy in your ordinances, that.
You feel a ordinance or a resolution?
I would do an ordinance at this point, because then it sticks, that's one of your new, the downside, it takes a little longer.
An ordinance has teeth to it where a resolution doesn't necessarily.
But I also think, one of the things that we might need to make sure we do is, whatever we do, it's, it's logical, we can.
Agree.
We can implement it in a way that's not gonna tie our hands, 'cause I, I get it, when you look at the sales tax reports, we, when you take the tobacco tax, use tax, sales tax, we might technically be fourteen thousand dollars ahead from last year, month to month, but that fourteen thousand more just got wiped out by our insurance payments alone. And so, but anyway, with this, we I mean, I, I, I don't see a logical way to do this, but.
This would take a little bit more time, unfortunately, but I think doing the ordinance, getting with Jeff to figure it, 'cause, and you said it up there, the practicality of what we're trying to do is the issue wouldn't just come in, but it's a, I mean, a valid concern, what is trying to be done?
Who made the motion?
I believe I did.
Brishers and Gonthea.
I'm curious if you would be willing to amend it, I know it's gonna have to be an ordinance. I would way rather Chase draft our ordinance and not me, Chris, and the other members of, of the ONI committee have to sit up there and try to figure this thing out.
'Cause the practicality of that is these two, not me, but I can get with them.
Curious if you would amend your motion to.
You understand the intent, so you can make it happen.
Yes, I will amend my motion to ask.
And I think, Chris and I, just so everyone knows, Chris and I discussed, we discussed possibly doing a resolution, 'cause it's faster, but I think, you know, it's worth, it's something to get the teeth and put it in writing, and that way there's compliance through your entire purchasing policy, so nothing with a resolution is changing sort of like contradicting what the ordinance says.
So basically, what we would have to do is withdraw all these motions and take no action and then?
No.
Have you done it or no?
He's, he's amended the question.
I've amended.
He's gonna direct Chase to write an ordinance, or amend the ordinance.
All right, that worked for me.
Do you guys want me to work on an entire, not that you have your entire city code in front of you, but two-dash-one-dash-three is the entire purchasing policy? So that is.
So.
Involving the purchasing limits, the emergency limits, the bidding, I don't know what you're talking about.
This whole, that whole thing does need reworked. I will tell you that part of the issue is, is that we have a city administrator that says we shall employ, that also makes them in charge of contracts, the purchasing agent, and, uh, Emery, they're the budget officer, there are lots of things that we either have to strike that ordinance or we should follow the ordinance, if that's what we're gonna do, I don't know, but.
Yeah, so just so everyone, and I don't know if this is technically on the agenda, but so everyone knows what he's talking about, what? We're gonna go back in time. When Trammell and these towns changed our form of government or created a full-time mayor, the ordinances were not updated, so your ordinances actually require a city administrator, and it's a shackle, we've not had one. The practicality of it is since it was there before we had a mayor, when we became full-time mayor, we didn't need a city administrator, 'cause you really dealt with dipping. So, I, I imagine, I haven't talked to Jimmy, but I imagine he just decided, like, full-time, I can handle all this, it was fine.
Discussion was he couldn't get anybody to apply for it that met the qualifications, there are some pretty stringent qualifications.
Qualifications are pretty high, um, considering the population prior. So I do think we do need to just strike that entire ordinance thing, or put all of those duties directly under the mayor, one together.
So your motion is to allow Chase to work with Jeff to upgrade, or to work on two, one, three?
Correct.
And whatever, not just the purchasing policy, but wherever that city, he's gonna have to fix the city administrator, 'cause like I said, it makes them the budget officer, the purchasing agent, the bidding person, they have.
They have so many jobs.
He's gonna have to figure out how to take.
Since that's not an engine, then how about I just start doing that one with the understanding of it?
For free?
Whoa, 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 we don't use that word.
Oh, I thought we were getting some free gratis out of this.
Chris, do you amend your motion?
To match your second, yeah.
Yeah, I'll amend my second to match what he described.
I have written down, amended to request city attorney to draft an ordinance to amend the purchasing policy two-dash-one-dash-three.
That sounds fine to me, is it okay?
Call for the vote?
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gonthea?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item B, discussion of possible action regarding any expenses over the line item allocation in the general budget must be approved by the council prior to incurring indebtedness, request submitted by Gonthea, Smith, Brown.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Gonthea, second from Brown, or, I'm sorry, Brishir? Motion from Gantier, second from Brown, or I'm sorry, Frischir?
No, you're good. Uh, I don't, I thi- think the purpose of this is saying, which I, I will say, I think that it has to come to us before we can expend money over a budget item anyway, so.
Correct, you already have that rule, there's no.
But I think that was the purpose of it though, right, Chris?
Yeah, but I think there's been a few times that stuff happened that we've kind of.
It's, it's been expended before it came to us, and we've said we've had to move money around.
Yeah, and we don't want to have to go ahead and approve a purchase order for something that's already been acquired, or purchased, or what, or, or the indebted, indebtedness is actually, we're under bondage, so we have to approve it.
Will this, take care of that?
It can.
Eventually, but in the meantime, until that's drafted, I would like to see this one stick until that's done, that way we won't overspend.
Chris, some of that you may already have covered, anyway, with insurance, which you have, we're told, I don't know how utilities are going, but that will be possibly an issue.
Directly.
It does two things, it allows us to stop unnecessary, but it also keeps us updated, so we'll know if we're going in the hole, and it will tell us to lock down another areas of the budget that we can perhaps change, even though we may be overspending here, we'll know we better cut somewhere else.
Just as if you did before this item was placed on the agenda.
I, I think theoretically, we haven't overspent anything, because we haven't approved a budget, so.
Exactly.
We've just encumbered things, and we just have to adjust the budget up to cover them at this point.
You are correct, it's exactly what I've said at every meeting, I feel like.
I mean, we haven't.
I feel like working on this will cover this item, and.
I, I'll tell you my intent, and the last direction is to also cover this, with whatever Mr. Volker and I can come up with from a practicality standpoint.
Absolutely, so further discussion, call for the vote.
What are we doing?
If Chase said that we're going, if this will be covered under his deal, then on this one, we don't need to take any action.
Yeah, we can do no action, if you wanna amend it to no action.
This, doing this would give us a short-term control until the ordinance is fixed.
But what action in this line item are you taking? Because it just says regarding any expenses.
It must be approved by the council prior to incurring, in other words, if we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for that line item, before we spend twelve or thirteen, it needs to come to council, and that does two things. We can stop it if we need to, or we know that we're starting to go in the hole in some areas, and we better make adjustments.
I'm curious, are you gonna pass the budget tonight? Because right now, that means we have the.
I don't think we should discuss that yet.
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, right now, passing this without a budget, basically, that's nothing, because you have nothing to compare it with.
So basically, it'll only take effect when we pass a budget.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll.
Like that, either way, I mean.
Just, just say no, because we can't, we can't.
Well, I, I think we do. I think, I'd like to make the recommendation that we add these V and W to include what Chase is gonna be working on, and I'll, I'll go with Lamar, that at this point, we've already got the ball rolling on that, you guys have voted on that, we can, I mean.
I would like to ask our attorney, would there be value to leaving this in place until such time as you get that adjusted?
Here, value is relative. Where you're coming from, yes, there's value, my concern with the wording is any expense, similar to what Jeff was saying.
I'll, I'll, I'll make, I'll change my motion to similarly reflect.
Actually, I can change that, I, let me rephrase that, there is no value until you pass a budget. I will say that.
I would, I would amend my motion to make it similar to what we passed for the previous.
So you want to amend it to request the city attorney to draft an ordinance to amend the purchasing?
To, to lump it into what, what we were talking about.
Yes.
So amend the motion to include in the drafted purchasing policy that the city attorney is going to do.
Is that some reason, yeah, that's what we'll do.
I'll, I'll go along with that.
So if you've got all that, when you're ready, call for the vote.
Uh, Gantier, you did that, Frischers, you're seconding?
Yes.
Correct.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item W, discussion of possible action regarding no general fund line item transfers will be allowed without prior council approval, including but not limited to unallocated reserves. Request submitted by Gantier, Smith, Brown.
I make the motion to reflect similarly to the two previous.
Wait, this would not be covered in that.
I draw that.
Already, you have one where expenses, this isn't incurring expenses, I'm gonna work on your expenses and your purchasing policy, but this is not part of that. I will give you guys a fun fact, the word unallocated reserves is not located anywhere within the charter of the ordinances, so do what you want with that information.
Do we not already?
Do we have a motion?
Do we not already do this?
We have.
I'll make a motion, so that we can discuss it.
I'll make, I'll second.
Okay, now we.
Who's second?
Okay.
I thought that was a rule anyway.
That, that's right, my question was, isn't this what we already do?
Correct.
Again.
Where is it in our rules that this is what we have to do?
It's just you guys approve the budget, but, but again, the word unallocated reserves is not.
No, the question, the question is, what stops anybody from moving something from one fund to another?
Budget transfer. Yeah, that's, that's a state law. That's a state law, right.
So we cannot change li, just within a budget, change line items?
The council can.
It can, but, but it has to go to council?
Yeah.
So that is a state law?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with that then.
And are you good with amending to no action on this one?
Technically, the motion's for discussion only.
Okay, that's why, so W.
It says.
Says possible.
Possible action.
Yeah, but they said discussion only.
No, he said I make a motion.
I didn't, but I'll, I'll make a motion, take no action at this point.
I'll second.
Need to make sure we use appropriate tones in here. All right, so you're making the, amending your motion to.
Yes, no action.
No action, and you're seconding the no action on item W. Took the words right out of my mouth.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Okay. Item five, city attorney's report.
We made it, we made it two hours, Chase.
No, motion to enter public hearing.
So move.
I have a motion from Frischir, and a second from Gantier.
Yes.
Did anybody wait the reading?
This is a short one, I'll read it.
Okay.
Zoning change for John Heath neighbors, the south half of lot numbered eleven, and all lot numbered twelve in block twenty-two of the Whittaker addition, Mays County, State of Oklahoma, according to the official plat, survey thereof, also known as one hundred North Indianola. The current zoning is commercial restricted, the applicant is requesting the zone be changed to residential duplex for a single-family home. Mrs. Cummings, do you have something?
Do we have to vote to enter public hearing first?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, hang on one second, just stay there, because we are gonna come back, just, we're gonna take our vote, and we'll go to public hearing, if they approve. Call for the vote.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
All right, Wanda, floor, George Fur.
Well, we have the property at one hundred North Indianola. That is a property that sits adjacent to the Pete's Drive-In, and then down Indianola, the very first house on the other side, of course, is Trey Laramore's house that they've done. So there is residential right there. It, we're asking it to be made residential due to the fact that that street that runs between Pete's and the property is a very narrow street, and for commercial use, it, it just doesn't qualify. And this property, for many years, had a house on it, it was an old house. They ran a shop out of the back garage called The Buggy Shop. A lot of people don't remember that.
Apparently.
That was why.
There's a kid there.
That was why it was commercial, but when it was built, it was a residential home. And we would like to have it changed, we've gone through the planning and zoning, and we would come here, we'd like to have you approved to have that changed to residential for a single-family home.
There's nothing on it, it's a vacant lot currently, correct, it's a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot, but the old shed is still standing, but it's not.
How large is that, do you know roughly, or do you?
Yes, I do.
I see it.
I know, that's. That is the survey I did.
Thank you so much.
And it's ninety-five by five hundred and forty.
It's just over a quarter acre.
Which, in my opinion, is larger than a home.
Thank you, ma'am.
Somebody decided to open up a little shop, and I think they did some repair work out of it. And kids hung out in it.
Bought an Avon bottle and a pocket knife from him.
There you go.
All right, Wanda, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other voices?
Do you need these back, ma'am?
Do you want these back?
Yeah.
Okay, any other voices for the?
Is, is there any known opposition?
Yeah, that was my next question, if there are any.
Sorry, I didn't step my feet.
It's okay, no, no, you're good, thank you, if you have nobody against it, then I move.
I, I just meant, I'm sorry, I meant, had anybody heard from any other constituents or anything like that about it?
And it was a recommendation from P and Z?
Yes.
To change it, okay.
Yep, yeah, just for reference, if the P and Z doesn't recommend it to come to council, then it won't make your agenda.
Was there anybody at the P and Z pro or con about it?
Ms. Cummings was there.
Okay.
You were the, you were the one and only, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion, did, did you have any, well, well, let's exit public hearing, do you have a motion to exit public?
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
You have a motion from Gantier?
Second.
Second from Mr. Smith, call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
B, discussion of possible action regarding the zoning change for John Heath neighbors, legal as read above.
I make a motion that we do as it is listed above.
Second.
We have a motion from Gantier, and a second from Mr. Smith, discussion. Okay, given none, call for the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item C, I need a motion to enter public hearing, and preferably rate, when we get there, we'll waive the reading.
I will make that motion, I'll second it, whichever.
Make the motion, uh, go to public hearing, and waive the read.
And I will second that.
Thank you, Wanda, we have a, did you get that, or do I need to?
You need to say it.
I'm sorry, we have a motion from Frischir to enter public hearing, and waive the reading, and a second from Gantier. The, uh, this is for, well, call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Okay, this is for, uh, Limestone Construction LLC, this will be the third tract of land in that property that they're trying to develop. Current zoning on that is ag, they're requesting the zone be changed to commercial automotive recreation for storage units and possible retail. Mr. Green apologized that he wasn't able to make it, he had to leave to go out of town this evening. So, uh, he has been present at all previous hearings, and apologized that he couldn't be here.
But this is also for the, because he mentioned that there was a, they're gonna do apartments, but also have a correct self-storage, strictly for the apartments, or?
Not strictly for, it'll just be, it'll be there, so storage and retail, because it's where they're at right now.
I, I, I do have a question, somebody had brought it to my attention, and I don't know if this applies or not, but the proper procedure, the way we have to handle these, we had some discussion on a similar one a while back, in order to make sure that this is legally binding, because it's dealing with, are we handling this the appropriate way?
Todd and I talked about this, I need to double check and see if we can do a resolution, or it has to be an ordinance.
Are we able to discuss all of this under the public hearing, or do we need to wait till we get to?
We were talking about, I mean, yeah, I guess, okay.
No, we'll, we'll come back out of the public hearing, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, anybody against, anybody for, okay, do I have a motion to exit public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Second, we have a motion from Gantier to exit public hearing, second from Frischir, call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, item D, discussion of possible action regarding the zoning change for Limestone Construction LLC, legal as read above.
So move.
Motion from Gantier.
I'll second.
Second from Shropshire.
That same question, and it's purely, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I just wanna make sure that we do it, so that when it goes through, that it's dealing with people's titles, that it's legally done.
Absolutely, um, I'm looking into that. As of right now, I'm kind of, I think we talked about doing resolutions, speeding them up.
Correct, and I contacted the county, and they had no preference whatsoever, they didn't care what it was, as long as it's in a doc, a document that's approved by you guys, they don't care.
Yeah, I don't think they'll care, I'm still doing research on that, as far as county, that's good for now.
I'm fine, I just wanna make sure that people's deeds are protected.
Well, I'm tempted, while resolutions are faster, I'm tempted to say, let's do, this is just, that's what has always been done, and there hasn't been an issue. But it would be nice to speed them up at the same time, so, let me get, get an answer on that.
So Chase, in addition to trying to get us an answer on it, you've mentioned resolutions a couple of times, but we don't have a, an official resolution before us.
Correct.
To do these actions.
That is correct.
Well, it'll have to be typed up and redone at a later date.
Yeah, present a resolution, yeah.
But we never do any kind of document until after this has been approved, and then we bring that document to you at the next council meeting, so it's not like you're missing something.
And it's, I think the reason it's been like that is because it's a second, it's a third.
Right. We approved on resolution at the last council meeting, though. But, but, but with, I mean, we approved discussion and action, but we didn't actually, we haven't approved an actual resolution, I don't think, have we?
Um, I have slept since the last council meeting, I don't remember.
I'm pretty sure we have it.
I believe the last one we did.
I think the last council meeting is when I.
Was for properties for limestone.
The last two resolutions.
Four, five, and six.
For zoning changes were different.
It was one for the, correct, it was for limestone's apartments, and for the storage units, yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's what I just signed, wasn't it?
Yeah, sent that.
I'm pretty sure you did.
Let's have a.
Okay, I don't think, we just voted to approve, I don't know that we did a resolution on, I guess that's my question.
Did.
On the previous ones?
Did we just vote to approve them? Prove the change is what we voted for.
Regarding this property, though, I've, I have received some calls from. I have received some calls from folks that are technically outside the city limit, but one of the main concerns was the condition of the highway there, as well as the accesses to north and southbound. Do we have any plan in place that's going to help alleviate the traffic? I know there's also been talk about, what about...
Alleviating the traffic is going to be diverting sixty-nine to somewhere else, and that's not happening.
Well, I meant...
What we've considered with these... Let me... I'll answer your question.
Yes, sir, good.
What we've talked about with these developments is we go north, and we talk about the highway. How do we slow traffic? How do we keep the safety? Is that we realize that as the development goes on, we're going to have to put a light more than likely there where the entrance of the animal shelter is. But also, interest has been had by other parties to see if we couldn't get ODOT to agree to slow traffic a little further north. An undefined area, but maybe slow it down to the city limits, forty-five. Again, that is not set in stone. That is not doctored, and that's not ready for print. That's just the discussions that have been had. You know, as we look at the entrance to where the potential apartments will be, it'll be there at the entrance to the... Where the animals... They have Rock and G Animal Shelter. Area of highest traffic. And their designs, preliminary as of right now, do include some roadage that would go kind of east and north around that property. So we get a little better plans, then we can take those plans to ODOT as we go through. Step one right now is getting the agricultural designation changed to the appropriate for the plans that are there. And again, those have all been approved through the P and Z and sent to you guys at this point. They're not going to give us any plans until they can get the allocation for the zoning that they want. In terms of that zoning change, again, we have done the three-hundred-degree radius search. We sent it out. We did have, in the P and Z, we had two individuals that showed up for this limestone... I don't know what you want to call it. This limestone zoning change that fell just barely inside that three-hundred-feet area, and they were on the far side of the highway. They did have some concerns about water pressure. Brief conversation with Chief Young about that. He did mention that at one point, there were some issues getting some water pressure up there. Another brief conversation with MUB, and they weren't too concerned with the work that they've done in that area recently, too. They weren't concerned. And when BK was saying concerned, typically, they try to get to fifty PSI, and they were pulling about forty-five, which is not the end of the world, but as you add. So again, MUB wasn't concerned, but also, before MUB can make that designation, we need to see exactly what their plans will be so that we can... They can address that and go forward. But again, they were on the other side, not discrediting them because they're outside city limits. But those were the two. They weren't irate or anything. They just were wanting to make sure that that was addressed. Other than that, the only other person that fell on that property was Mr. and Mrs. Morehead that live in that house directly to the north of that property. And they had absolutely no concerns. Last time, they had no concerns. This time, they were all for it. So. No worries. Hopefully, that answers all the questions. Any further? Done, then we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Item E, possible executive session pursuant to twenty-five through seventy-four of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for purpose of confidential communications with attorney regarding Rachel Sordahl versus the City of Pirate Creek. Before we make that motion, Chase, do we need to come and go for every one of these?
I think so. That way, the public knows how much time is spent on each thing.
Okay. That was a question that I had been asked by somebody this morning. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Reshear and a second from Gauthier. Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be back in a little bit.
Am I coming in here as well?
Yes.
Make sure I'm not wasting my time.
But you're on countdown, right? When do you leave for vacation? Close, right? Very good.
More and more.
A week tomorrow.
We will consider resuming executive, a regular session, no action taken during executive session.
Motion.
Motion.
I have a motion from Rasheer and a second from Gantier. Off the vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item I, possible executive session pursuant to 25374 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication with attorney regarding Janice Bell versus City of Prior Creek, CB 24, 2024-807. There are motions.
Motion.
Motion from Rasheer, second from Gantier. I should make you guys pay for your motions.
Quicker the motion, the quicker we go home.
Hey, there you go, right? Whatever. Okay. Off the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rasheers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
We've also got a whole front side of that thing on legal to do. You do it. Right? I had some deal going, so it's super cheap.
Okay, mics are on again.
I'm looking forward to little Seamus coming back.
Well, before we get started, just remind everybody that the mics are picking up a lot of paper and bags from the concessionaries that we've got.
Thank you, Nina.
Well, appreciate it. We just need to make sure that we, we're comfortable with that. Okay, item J, consider resuming regular session, no action taken during executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion from Gauthier.
Go ahead.
And a second from Beshear. Call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, let me make sure we got everything that we needed to before we go on with the rest of this.
Committee reports, unless you want to do that at the end.
Budget.
You know what? Why not? Let's just do a committee report. What do we got?
Budget eight.
Wait, 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 you guys jump ahead. These two are way back here.
Fair warning.
You gave me like.
We're making sure you're away.
Hang on, hang on, guys. Okay.
Okay, budget and personnel?
Uh huh, eight.
Ten eight, all right. Ordinances and insurance?
There's none scheduled currently.
Sounds like, the reason I was wanting a special was, it sounds like as soon as Chase is done with that.
Yeah.
When you're ready, please let us know. We'll get on schedule. Stream maintenance?
Schedule for Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, if needed.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just received a text that said that we're not getting live feed. I don't know how, but it was such a case. Thought it would bring your attention.
I'll check.
Works fine for me. Lori just screamed, "We're live," so.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go back to the mayor's report. Item four B, discussion and possible action regarding the general government budget fund two oh one for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Brown and a second from Gauthier.
So, I know this went through the budget committee from watching last week, but I don't. I don't see how we can pass a budget that doesn't follow the advice of our accountant, who we pay to tell us what we need to budget. It would be akin to not following Mr. McBride's advice if he told us to do something and going our own route. Jeff, do you have time to speak? I know we're going down probably the same roads that we've been down a hundred times at this point. My personal frustration with this is I feel like. I know that we have heard, we've cut, we've cut, we've cut, there's nowhere else to cut from. Unfortunately, we have to find somewhere else to cut from to get to eight point three. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
And then I also had to hear in the budget committee meeting about we have have a balanced budget. We do not have a balanced budget.
Well, balanced, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor Doyle stated we had a balanced budget. His terminology for balanced is it meets. The number that we can legally budget equals the number that he has budgeted. A balanced budget is not that. A balanced budget is one where expenditures do not exceed revenues. Correct?
Well, yeah, you mean a zero budget, yeah, yeah.
We are top-heavy, then.
You are expense-heavy.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Expense-heavy?
Okay, and the only way the city can continue to not be top-heavy is to make cuts somewhere to get to.
Cuts, raise revenues, or a combination of the both.
Okay.
Of course, we don't have the direct control over raising revenues. That's a long-term, that's a long-term option, solution.
Possibly. I mean, there were some things we could.
I mean, aside from like a tax or a fee.
Fees, right, you know, something like that. We, but that's up to you all, but yes.
Right.
So, those are the things you have control over. You really don't have control over how much sales tax versus. I mean, the only other thing you can control in sales taxes is the rate. You could increase the rate, but that's not something I don't think anybody wants to do.
Right.
So, but yes, so raise revenues, make cuts, or a combination of the both.
Correct.
So, what happens if we don't pass a budget when it's time to turn it in? Technically, we're past time. But can that be, just like they do, I mean, I, I, okay, I honestly.
So here, I'll answer that.
Well, okay, you'll tell me that. Go ahead.
Prior is in a very interesting spot. So, there are two types of budgets, and I'll go over this. We follow the estimate of needs. We do not follow the municipal budgeting act. In the, I don't remember here, in the estimate of needs, the council under statute is actually tasked with creating the budget, not the mayor. In the municipal budgeting act, the mayor creates it.
Or the city administrator.
All right, well, that's another issue. So, Prior has done something a little different. We have elected to do the estimate of needs, but we have put in our ordinances carving out the difference from the statute, the procedure to get it. So, our calculation follows statute. Our way of getting that is different. Our ordinances say we have a city administrator who shall be appointed by the mayor, kind of went over that earlier. That person is actually the one who is supposed to create the budget, bring it to the mayor, mayor then brings it to the council. The issue I think we're potentially going to run into, or has been discussed, is what happens if that budget does not get approved? I think at some point, it reverts back to the state statute, and the council can then take it out of the mayor's position. The issue is, you've got.
I was gonna say, the deadline was August twenty-fifth.
Or past the deadline. So, I think you're getting close to needing to do something to get a budget.
I have not ever seen anything done, but I would hate to be the first.
I, I refuse to let the future affairs of the city let a deadline stand in the way of doing what's right now. I'm sorry, but we've already passed it, and three of us on this end tried to get this headed off beforehand. We knew it was going to be coming down to the wire, where we were going to be asked to be push a budget through with zero time, and then our hand was going to be forced. We tried to prevent that. It didn't happen, for whatever reasons. I'll respect that, but I'm not going to be pushed into making a decision because of a deadline.
If we don't pass a vote of, is the, basically, you can't write a check? So, basically, the city saw the shutdown, just like federal government, right?
We're encumbering.
Yeah, we're encumbering.
We've been operating that way for two, three months.
I think at some point, and I, I can't find that this has ever happened. First, Prior, again, has this carve-out, so we're a little bit different than just following the straight-up. Oh, this is as our entire charter ordinance is. But I think at some point, there has to be an emergency if there is not something done. I probably, as the lawyer, I advise you follow the law, which your deadline was August twenty-seventh. As a practicality standpoint, Jeff will say nothing actually has to be done until the budget meeting with the.
Excise board.
The excise board.
But it has to be in the paper, correct? Yeah, but even then.
It just has to have one publication.
Right, just one. And it has to be in a publication of record, which the paper is, and then they take a copy of what they published, and they send it to the county, and then the county puts it with your paperwork, and it goes on. So, how much time does that take? What's your deadline for next week?
Noon tomorrow, right?
Yeah. It's in the, it's in the twenty-third paper. Then, you give the county information they need, and then it's set in the state office by October first.
Right, but what is your deadline for the next edition? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Oh, my gosh. That's what I'm saying. We're, we're here, folks. Well.
Well.
Look.
So, here's where I, so I guess that will be the deadline. I think the mayor is presenting a budget tonight. You can approve what he has presented, or we sit here and we go by the line until something's approved.
When does the exercise board? We needed these.
When does the exercise board meet?
I was told they'd meet around the first of September? No, I mean, October.
Around the first, or?
I don't know the exact.
Well, it, it can vary on when they meet as to whether or not we have time for another week worth of publication.
So, if they meet the first of October, we still got time up to that point.
Well, if, if we send something on the twenty-fifth. But I don't know. That would be to the paper that would come.
I don't know, right? So, there's, we're kind of doing the, you know, why, why do I suggest follow the statute deadline? Practicality, if you miss that deadline, you would miss the, I think in your previous, practicality is, I don't think anything really happens as long as you have, when the exercise board meets. You miss that?
I don't know. I've.
Practicality, we have a budget that expends every dollar that the city has, and that's going to put us in a bind for next year.
Do we have to spend it? That's, that's what I'm wondering. If it's in a lot of them, do you have to spend it?
Well, no, but nobody controlled it last year.
We proved that last year, Choya. We proved it. He sat there and told us what to do. He said, "Cut a hundred thousand." We didn't do it. We overspent six hundred and eighty thousand.
If you put, if you, if you have a unallocated funds with the nine hundred thousand that people are wanting. Then, what's going to happen at the end of the year? Either we shut the city down, or you go into the unallocated funds to finish out the year.
If you don't make cuts.
If you don't cut the expenses. You can cut expenses.
Where do we have areas?
Where do we have areas that we can cut?
We have budgeted positions in there that could come out, I'm sure that's not a comfortable conversation to have, but it, they could come out.
But would that really, if you're not, if that, if you're not filling those positions. Then, if you're not filling those positions, then you're not spending that money, so then it just comes back at the end of the year.
So, why put the budget if we're not gonna fill it?
What?
Don't put it in there. The Congress has said, we've gotta really watch, we've gotta watch it like.
Position, and you don't, and you don't fill it, then you're not paying that position, then that just comes back at the end of the year.
Well, you just.
It's carryover.
Well, I mean, you don't spend it, so it's money that you didn't spend, and so, yeah, and then if you don't continue not to fill it, then you just.
You just don't spend the money.
Yeah, you just don't spend the money.
Right, so it's not like, it's, it's not like the money's going away because that position is there.
Well, well, I mean, if you have a position, you're paying the payroll, if you don't have a position, it's money saved, so whatever that position would've paid, say it was fifty thousand, just for sake of argument. That's fifty thousand plus the cost of whatever business is, would be saved if that position is not filled.
As long as you don't fill it, and we have a hiring freeze zone.
Right.
So, let me make sure my understanding over the last couple of months is right. I was under an impression that with the officers that had moved on. That was gonna save an X amount of that nine hundred thousand, how mu, do we know how much that was?
Well, I would guess.
All those open positions that were open, pretty much citywide, I don't, did we get the last two that left taken out?
The open positions that we have is one SRO position, and then the two positions for the officers that just recently resigned.
Right.
We have to have those budgeted in some form or fashion because we have paid them during this.
We don't have to budget them continuing though.
But the two hundred, but.
But how much, but basically, how much money are we now not budgeting to those positions because they moved on?
Eighty-five an officer.
Eighty-five an officer.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say about.
Those three open positions that we closed were ninety, ninety thousand, I think ninety-seven thousand a piece.
A piece.
You did pay him for two months, so let's just say eighty-five thousand, so, two minutes, two officers that left, that would save you about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Three.
But they were already gone, that one.
No, there, there's, there's an SRO and two.
One is an SRO position.
But we never.
That's not correct, that's not a factual statement.
To have five officers.
But we're not required to hire them.
Required to have five officers in SRO positions, that doesn't mean that.
We can break that contract, thirty days written notice, we can break it.
That is.
We're not tied.
Well, but either, either way, that would be, if, the eighty-five thousand by three is roughly two, two hundred and fifty thousand, roughly.
And there is a clerk position as well, that's.
Is there a clerk position that's available?
Well, but the point is.
I was just saying that we had, we had not filled those positions last year, so we hadn't really counted them for this year. So, the new savings is the two officers that just resigned, which would be about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, so, we're a hundred and seventy thousand closer to nine hundred.
Of course, we had more expenses for insurance, I don't know the net difference over the last year, but so there was probably, some of that savings was probably eaten up with that.
Right, well, 'cause I, and I mentioned earlier with our current taxes, sales use and tobacco. That fourteen thousand dollars roughly that we're ahead, the combination of all three is, isn't helping. I mean, it helps, but it's not fixing our problem, and we don't know, I mean, yeah, we had the Bluegrass and Chili Festival, we still have Christmas coming up, we, we've got more things going on, but those are going to be more long-term solutions, more than they are short-term solutions. But if we were a, if we were the board of a business, and we were looking at within the next two years of not having any money in the bank, if nothing changed. What would we be doing? Well, what's the first thing we would be doing? We would be looking at personnel, I, I don't wanna, I hate to go there, I hate to say that. But let's just, I mean, it's uncomfortable, but you gotta go there eventually. If we have, if we have cut and trimmed and cut and trimmed, every citizen that I have spoken to. I understand that there might be a level of, you know, misunderstanding as, you know, they'll say, "Well, I pay so much in property tax, well, property tax doesn't affect us." But it's, before we put another burden on especially people who are already struggling. You know, it would be no different if we were a business having to look at that. And so, I know it's not a comfortable conversation to have, and it sucks, I, I totally admit that, but what choice are we left with? Because that nine hundred thousand and unallocated reserves, i- in my personal opinion, pretty much a necessity at this point. Because we're either gonna have this conversation now, or we're potentially gonna have this conversation in, what, eighteen months to two years? Because, God forbid, a tornado hit Walmart, and then we're out of their sales tax revenues for a couple of months.
E- even if they're not, if we continue our spending ways, we're out of money in a, a couple of years' time. And it on, the cuts only get deeper the longer we continue to cut into our reserves, because that's our budgeting power. Correct?
Yes, because you budget ninety percent of your revenue and your carryover, so.
Which carryovers are our reserves, and.
Right, right.
So, if it's diminished, then our budgeting power has then diminished, yes?
That's correct.
We're either gonna have to deal with it now, or we're gonna double deal with it next year. You told me, I think you said to get, if you're cutting salaries, you'd have to cut nine people at seventy-five thousand a year?
That was the math when I.
Yeah.
If you just cut salaries, but I think that there, we could probably explore other ways.
Other places besides salaries.
Right, no, you just asked me about the, if, you know, if we did salaries, this would be how many people it would be, and that would mean a nice quite a bit, so.
We could cut some overtime, we could vehicles, if we have a reduction in wherever it is within the city. We could decrease the type of insurance that we have on those vehicles, we should reduce the use of vehicles that'll cut on fuel, maintenance. There's a lot of things that we can look at, we have to have discussion about.
Right.
And it has to happen, are we gonna be in trouble?
Right, now, of course, this may sound contradictory, but the budget is irrespective of your decisions. So, you pass a budget, whatever it is, then you make your decisions to do all these things. The budget passed doesn't affect your future decisions of what you're gonna do. Now, I mean, we know we need to cut, so that's what you guys are gonna be looking at doing, right? So, you know, you, you can pass a budget with the nine hundred thousand carryover, you can invest a budget without the nine hundred thousand in the unallocated reserve. But regardless of how you pass a budget, it doesn't change what you have to do.
I think, I, I understand that. My frustration with this has been, we know we need to get to eight point three, we, and we know that because you've told us that multiple times.
That's what your revenues were.
And you graciously created a couple of budgets where we put nine hundred thousand in reserves, and then we didn't actually make, we, we, we cut the budget, but we didn't fundamentally cut it, we just reduced numbers.
Well, I didn't know where to cut that.
Absolutely, it's not your job. It, it is the Mayor's job to, to form the budget, and therefore, it is his job to decide where the cuts need to come from in order to meet that.
If you put nine hundred thousand in unallocated reserves, and you start cutting people. What do you think's gonna happen? Do you think that the employees are just gonna say, "Well, you know, we don't have any money"? The first thing that's gonna happen is they'll say, "You've got nine hundred thousand over here in reserves, so in unallocated."
I, I would argue that all day long, that that's, that is our reserve money that we should not touch. It is reserved for a reason, one's our budgeting power, two is in case we have any problems, but I would also argue, it's our money to, to allocate however we see fit. One hundred percent, I, I think that.
And I, and I, I sympathize with that as well, but. If we were in any other context, I know the mechanics of budgeting for homes and businesses and municipalities is different, but the, the, it's math. And it's irresponsible, I mean, it's also principle, but it's irresponsible to not lay aside for yourself some kind of emergency fund. Not to quote Dave Ramsey, but if you live on more than you make, that's not going to work, duh. And so.
I could make a schedule that would just prove that, if someone, if someone said you have nine hundred thousand, I would just show them what would happen if that nine hundred thousand.
And, and so, again.
How long would we keep that nine hundred thousand?
I, I think we always need to hold back at least ten percent of what we think we're gonna be budgeting, because that's, that's what allows us to budget to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Well, that budget's not a hundred percent, that, that ten percent is still out there in nowhere land.
But.
But if you don't have that reserve.
Sure you can.
Not if we don't have reserves.
Sure you can, because it's not in the budget, if the ten percent that you don't budget.
So, let's, okay, let's just say, for example, you have ten million dollars of revenue, you can budget nine hundred thousand. Okay, if you have no reserves, you can only budget the nine hundred thousand.
So, what happens?
Nine million, whatever, sorry.
What happens to the other hundred thousand?
Well, it's, it's just not budgeted, but then you have to basically submit a budget to the county based upon what you have, and that would be the nine million dollars, so then you would.
When you really have ten, but we can only budget nine of it.
And see, the thing is, is you really don't have the ten, you are betting you're going to get the ten. Because that's what you got last year, doesn't mean you're gonna get it this year. That's why the ninety percent is there, so you're making, you're gambling that you're gonna get the full amount.
Right, but that's, that's why that budget's set there, but that's still, the ten percent that you have left over, it's not in unallocated funds.
No, it's just not, it just doesn't show up because.
It just doesn't show up, so when you, when you get the money in from taxes and stuff, then that money is coming in, but it's not actually assigned at any position.
Right, if it comes in.
Yeah.
No guarantee.
And, and that's the problem, is i- it's not guaranteed to come in, and based upon our trajectory, we can only go based off of what has happened in the past up until now.
Right.
And again, we can't control the economic development side directly, I mean, even, even if a business, a big time business wanted to come in, it's still going to be so many months or so many years before they even, before we even see the effect of that. And so, the, the problem is, is we're either gonna have this conversation now, that's hard and nobody wants to have, and, and I sympathize with that. Or we're gonna have it later, and it's not just gonna affect the individuals that are affected immediately, it's gonna affect the whole city.
And, and if we don't put money in unallocated reserves, there's no guarantee that it doesn't get touched by somebody. And it's not fair to our department heads to give them money in a budget and then say, "We expect you not to spend it." It's, i- it, it truly isn't fair to them, and I, I understand the sentiment behind it, but it's, it's not a good practice. We, we blew through budgets last year, we saved money compared to what we were going to budget, but we still went well over our revenues.
Right.
And, and I don't think it's proper or prudent to tell Kerry, "You have three hundred thousand, but really, you only have two hundred and eighty." Or to tell Jeremy, "You have three million, but really, you can only spend two point five." Like, he, he, he's going to, if we tell him he has three million, he's going to assume he has three million to work with all year.
Well, let's say that you were at your house, and, and let's say that you had your budget, and all of a sudden, this year, your insurance went up, your electricity goes up. All your utilities are higher, you go down to buy gas, it's higher, your groceries are higher, and now let's say your refrigerator goes out. So, what do you do? You go into your saved money and, and pay for the refrigerator, right? Now, if you're gonna say, "Well, I'm not gonna spend anything over what I'm gonna bring in with our wages and stuff." And you've already seen that, you know, your, all of your utilities, everything else has gone up, so the only thing you can do is cut, right? So, you still have to pay your insurance, you still have to pay for all this other stuff, do you get, get rid of a couple of kids or something? Because they're expensive.
Well, I mean, I don't think that, or apples to apples, but.
I agree with that, but what you do, a- and granted, there's no guarantees of anything, but you, if you're prudent with your own finances, and again, whether it's a household, a business, or a municipality. If you suspect, if I suspect that in six months, I'm gonna be out of money, I need to make decisions now, or I'm gonna have to make worse decisions then.
Yeah, and so what you do is, you go find mu, other ways to get more revenue.
But the problem is, we can't do that in six months, we can't, or, okay, let me rephrase it, we can't guarantee that within six months, or within twelve months, or with, that. Most of the revenues that come in, we're, we're not a business generating profit, we are taking profit, well, okay. We are taking sales tax based upon the sales of private businesses for the most part, or use tax based upon construction. We can't guarantee that all of that is going to increase. That, that's, that's not something we have a direct control over, what we have direct control over is what's gonna go out of our account, aside from things like insurance or, or things like that.
So, what does the city do as a, as a government? What, what's our function?
Well, you provide the services.
Exactly right, we provide services, so can we provide services and still hold nine hundred thousand back?
With prop, with cuts, yes.
What cuts would you, would you recommend? That's what, that's what we haven't been able to figure out yet.
We just gave several.
I, I think that there's cuts that could be looked at.
You wanna go line?
Personally, at the end of the day, I, I, I think it's the Mayor's job to suggest what those cuts should be to make us meet eight point three.
Well, if we listen to what our counselor said, that's not really his job, it's our job.
Nope, that's not what he said, he said, "We amended it to make it his job."
We haven't, we haven't got the position out yet.
Mayor creates the budget and brings it to the council, and the council can approve it.
Right.
Can, can I say, can I say something real quick? I appreciate your analogy, Choya. But if I'm in a budgetary crisis, it's my money, it's my decision, but when I'm dealing with taxpayers' money and the citizens' money, who could be taxed on their property. I have to, I have to take a step back and be extremely accountable.
Totally agree, but what happens if you, you make those cuts, and then they say, "There's somebody breaking in my house, or my house is on fire, or I've got a, uh, something going on here," what do you say?
I, I appreciate those sentiments.
We had to make.
But I called the police department in Miami, and percentage-wise, they're operating with fewer people, with larger population, with casinos and everything. We can manage better and get our results, but the problem is, if we run out of money, we're gonna lose them all. And I'm not just picking on the police department, but you brought that up, you know, about people breaking in. We have to look at it, because if we don't have it, it doesn't matter how much we want to have them, I'm not anti-police, I like having them around. But you also have to remember, there's GRDA, there's Mays County, there's, there's multiple other agencies. In a large emergency, they will help each other out. And when we don't have the money to pay it, it doesn't matter how much I want, my, my kids wanted things growing up, I love my kids, I'd love to give them everything they want. But I couldn't do it, because their funds weren't always available, right now, the funds are not available, or are we gonna be putting our citizens in jeopardy?
This is something we should've done last year, and I'm the one voted against it, this mayor reminds me several times. But if we'd have done it last year, it wouldn't be so rough this year, but we said, "No, we're gonna pass it," and we, we put in the hiring freeze, and it was fought every council meeting. Somebody trying to fight.
And we were berated, and we were ridiculed, and we were persecuted for putting it in there.
And we should've done it then, we didn't have the guts to do it, now, if we don't take the guts, next time, we'll be getting property taxes.
Or we'll be slashing all kind of things.
So, we've gotta cut it and live with it, it's not a, it's not, it's just a business thing, it's nothing personal. I don't see any other way around to do it. Will you do it now, or do it twice as bad next year?
Well, and one of the things too, at the, at the last budget meeting was. Charles mentioned that there was a budget with nine hundred thousand in the unallocated reserve, but that the rest of it was really just not even feasible. How, how was, how did that, can you explain how you came up with that one, like, how, how did you get the numbers to make that nine hundred thousand work? Well, work.
Well, he just put nine hundred thousand in reserves, and then you just reduce counts to make it equal, by percentages is what it looked like.
So, then just a blanket percentage all the way?
It wasn't a blanket, but.
Pretty much.
Well, there was one that were cut more than others.
But anyways, that's unfeasible.
Well, I took it based upon one of the columns, so, it was a blanket percentage based upon whatever column, if that column had been cut previously. Then, it got cut by the percentage I used, so, yeah, I didn't, I did not favor anybody by cutting anybody.
Well, but was there even a, because that budget was just completely unfeasible anyway. Was there a desire to, to maybe put six hundred thousand unallocated reserve? Forty-five, four, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, is. Was there a desire to, to maybe put six hundred thousand unallocated reserve, forty-five, four hundred fifty thousand, I mean, is there any other?
We can change that number.
I was told that they wanted nine hundred thousand unallocated, so I gave you nine hundred thousand unallocated.
Right, but I guess the question I'm asking is, if we're saying that this is not feasible to do, is there an amount that is feasible, that could? Because I honestly don't know how I can in good conscience pass this, even though I know it's just numbers on a sheet, but I don't think we're setting ourselves up for success with this.
I don't want this to come across rude. It's hard to know what that number is, because I do not feel, Zach, I don't feel like you accurately cut from this budget to even try to meet it. And I, coming from that, was saying, you've left open positions in there. There's other items along through there, without getting derailed onto another budget, that I think that there are reasonable cuts that could be made, and until those cuts are made, it's hard to know what that realistic number could be for council.
So the only open positions we have right now that we set are the two from the officers that just left, and the one SRO position. Every other, every other open position has been removed.
Okay.
Even from the cemetery, everything.
The only thing it's like with this nine hundred thousand, now that you know if there's a nine hundred thousand, you can make adjustments to any of those numbers, you just have to subtract that number from somewhere else.
Chase, can I amend my motion? Because I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair for us to sit up here and say, all of this. And so I'm curious if I can make a motion that directs the mayor to specifically what we want out of this. How do we do that?
I don't think you can tell the mayor what budget to present. Mayor can, I mean, this is the budget he's presented, he can edit that if he wants to. You guys can either approve it or not approve it, and if you don't approve it, we're hitting down to that deadline. I think the council follows the statute as opposed to the code in the basic yourself.
Can I introduce a secondary motion to it, to do that? There's nothing I can do that directs him.
I don't, I don't think you can tell the mayor what to present.
I thought we set our own rules.
Well.
You said state statute, it falls to us eventually, but can't we go along with the state statute and say, okay, we're being pushed to a point now where we're about to be at default.
But that statute is you guys making and not directing him what to do. But yes, you're right.
So take the name or the reference of mayor out of it, and say, we knew the budget presented this way.
Now.
And if it's not done, we'll.
You don't accept that the council has to do it.
You can tell the mayor to do whatever you want. I don't think you can force him. Hey, we want you to present a budget that says this, and he says no, I don't think you have any authority to kick him out of office or anything. You can tell him that, and he can follow it or not, and present whatever budget he wants. If he presents a budget you don't approve.
By charter, he does answer to us.
Oh, what?
By charter, he does answer to us.
He answers to you, but I don't think there's a penalty for him not doing the math that we want done. Does that make sense?
It does.
He is tasked with your ordinances, actually, the city administrator under him is tasked with your ordinances in creating a budget, presenting it to him, he presents that to you. You guys have final approval. And I think the reason that that works in that statute is because you guys have a final approval, not him. So you have the opportunity to go line by line and change his budget, which is what the estimate of need state statute is. So procedurally, we do it a little different, but the end result is the same, is why they have to apply it. But I don't think you can force him to do the math for you.
Okay, question on procedure on that. You said the council could do the budget. Would that be the, us as the entire governing body, or would it start with the budget committee?
However you guys direct the final.
However we direct it.
It'd be the, it'd be the whole council. We approved what he set for, and we. Yeah, we've already done it.
Second question. How are we supposed to do that when each agenda item is busted apart? How are we supposed to discuss as a council?
Could you set a budget, or an agenda item, you just pass the budget in public?
It's not on there, though, so we can't.
Yes, that's what I would do.
What?
Put an agenda item that's just the entire budget, discuss the entire budget item-wise.
Okay. Can I amend my motion to make a request to the mayor? If we're going to send this back to him?
You certainly make any requests to the mayor, but it's just the ramifications of him doing that.
The ramifications.
I think the ramifications are not passing.
We voted down, we don't have a budget. So that's a wrap.
Then it falls back on us. It falls back on us, all eight of us.
And then we'll have to do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's where it's at.
You can certainly request the mayor, whether you do a motion or just to request it. It's just there's no ramifications. I don't think he has to do what you say on the budget. He presents his.
I would, I concur. And then if he doesn't, then it's up to us to hold his feet to the fire and send it back again.
No.
Or modify it yourself.
Or do it ourselves.
It's, we have to do it ourselves.
So if a request is made and it's not done, then we would have to do it.
You guys do need to remember, as far as the exercise board and state statute, it doesn't say mayor gets in trouble if the budget's not passed, the city gets in trouble. So just keep that in mind.
Individually?
Guys, you're in uncharted territory. I don't.
Well, I will take a fine, or I will take the cussing from the court.
I've never seen.
The city in hope.
Never seen it happen. I don't know.
Well, I'm ready to try. Ain't no backup in me.
If I was going to guess, I can tell you what I think would happen, is it's probably gonna represent the citizens of prior, come after you for not following the law, trying to put everybody's office.
Tyler, did you hear what he just said?
Sorry.
Say that again.
We were.
A budget is not passed, what I would imagine, regardless of whether the state or attorney general comes in and tries to take control, or it is a citizen prior, will hire an attorney and file motions regarding, or the council for not doing what you're supposed to do by passing the budget.
Including mayor.
Probably everything.
I was getting mayor involved.
That's a good.
Sorry, we were discussing the fact that, I don't know that we could physically, if we're not gonna pass this budget, we can't sit here tonight and do it, because they're broken apart, so you couldn't, we can't discuss from one budget to the next budget.
Could we?
And so how are we supposed to?
We can change the wording on that, can't we?
I, I think you can, and here's.
Tonight?
Hey, we got expressos, compliments, and Nina.
I'm not, I can stay up all night, I'm not worried about that, I just don't wanna.
Could we have a special meeting?
Yeah.
Where we sit back and lock in? And nine of us sit down and get it hammered out. We're in different circumstances now than normal.
I concur.
And nobody's bucking anybody, or doing anything to say, hey, we're not on the same page. But what we do need to do is realize that the decisions that need to be made should include the council at this point.
I would like it to include department heads, too.
I think we could hammer out what we have, and then bring them into it.
Yeah.
I don't think it's fair to make them sit through what could take us all night. And that's what I'm offering, I.
If we have questions for them, I'd like them to be available, though.
So I said a special meeting.
And as we said before, which makes no difference at this point, it's not our fault. We're having to correct something, it's not our fault, but we've gotta take the addition to correct.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at, and you're right, we've said that. We're also saying that we're getting to the point where we should stop saying whose fault it is and what it or it is.
And just correct.
I think what I was just telling Councilman Brown is, is that the situation we're in, I would classify as a little bit of an extenuating circumstance. I'm proposing that we have a special meeting, it may have to be the first part of next week, we have a special meeting where we just commit to lock in. And, I don't know, I don't want you to wear jammies, but.
Seeing as it's obviously gonna take a while, is it possible to have it start sometime during the day?
It's special, so I would think that we could. I know Charles can't get off till the afternoon, so I would like him to be able to be included.
Maybe he can have an exception to a certain, I don't know, maybe he can make it work.
I'm curious.
And we'll need, we'll need Mr. Coker here, too, won't we?
Does it have to go back to the budget committee?
This is here now.
Even though we're gonna amend it?
Yes, I think now what you're gonna do is, on your special meeting, if that's what you want, I think what you have already is broken down, is you combine that into one and discuss some action regarding.
General fund budget.
Could it be done like on a Saturday, where people aren't working?
No, it can't be, it has to be during business hours or business days.
The numbers you have with the nine hundred thousand just need to be reallocated, probably, is what you'd wanna do, if you wanna keep the nine hundred thousand. So you have the numbers in total, you just need to move them around a little, your liking.
And while we're talking about doing this, I do not see how we can do the police and fire union negotiations without knowing what that's potentially gonna cost, or not cost, to include in the budget. So that needs to play into this too somehow or another. And I think it's a foul from the city, us, the union negotiations on the city side, whoever, that that should've been done and in place months ago, before the end of fiscal year, to have that, to know how to figure into your budget. Because it's a potential that it could cost us a lot more, and we don't know what that amount's gonna be.
We didn't know what the budget was gonna be, so you didn't know what you could.
No, but you could already have something in place as a draft. But anyway, that's, yeah, because that's gonna affect some of the budget, too.
Do we have a general consensus, mayor included, that we should call a special meeting just for the budget, and word it to where we can bounce back and forth through all the.
By recall, that's what we did last year. It was contentious, but we had a special meeting to pass the budget, didn't we?
Yeah, but it still was one.
We went by line.
By department.
So can I amend my motion, then, to? Should I table this until a special meeting can be held?
I have to have a date.
You have to have no action?
So you're.
Or should I take?
How about next, next?
So if I take no action, then it's just understood that we're gonna have a special meeting? I guess I was trying to ensure that we would have, and I don't think that I'm necessarily worried about it, but.
I think it's in everyone's best interest that we have a special meeting, so I don't think it's gonna go.
Okay.
Without.
Friday? I mean, I just.
We're gonna have to look at the other meeting schedules and see what we can move around. And also make sure that everybody can make it during the day.
I mean, I could come Tuesdays after, probably one, I did, probably on Wednesdays.
Jeff, when you leaving?
About five o'clock Wednesday morning.
This coming week, or next?
No, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday.
Okay, so we got a little time with you then.
I think it's the. So we can figure out the date without stalling even longer here tonight at five thirty.
I'm gonna say Monday.
We have court Monday, so we can't do it during the day Monday.
It'll have to start Monday evening, then go through the night.
How long does your court last?
It'll probably last an hour or so.
What time does it start? Oh, well, I mean, if we did it Monday evening, I'd just work all night. I would like to be able to have it done and ready for design before I left on vacation, if at all possible.
Well, if. Courtney, why would it necessarily have to not, why does court have to do with it?
Because I recommended it be during the day, because we're gonna sit and talk.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, but if court's going on in here, that doesn't mean we can't have our meeting at the police station in the conference room, or wherever.
We can't livestream it, and then everybody complains about it? Doesn't have to be livestreamed technically, but.
There are city, there are city, there are city meetings and committees that aren't livestreamed, and we don't complain about those.
I'm just saying, we get complaints about any little thing that goes wrong with this livestreaming, so.
Well, I know that, yeah.
For open meetings, I don't think there's anything in your ordinances. For state statute, open meetings does not require a livestream.
It's just an option.
That's just something you guys do to the public to make it easier. Unless there's something in your order that's.
But if we're gonna have it in a room where not everybody, not a whole lot of people can fit in, it might behoove us to.
You can do a meeting in a bathroom, as long as people can come in.
I don't think you're gonna have a big crowd more than this, and they may not even come. It's not gonna be like the entire. I was just thinking that, that's an option, but.
I mean, it'll be open.
Why don't we have it here? What was the problem with that?
Court.
She has court.
Well, I do that to court, start.
That's fine, I'm just saying, I suggested a morning time.
She suggested during the day.
I have court at three o'clock in this room. I don't care when you guys do it, just tell me what we're doing, please.
Starting before is risky as to whether or not we'll even be done by the time court would start.
But you might take a break and then come back.
It probably won't take that long.
I mean, the budget's basically. The budget's basically done. All we have to do is just whittle it around. Just whittle it on it.
Who could make a Monday morning?
I can't. I have a meeting till twelve.
I'm not gonna give you any, I don't know yet. I don't know till after tomorrow.
Tell me a date and I can.
Who could make Monday evening? Monday evening?
What time Monday?
I'm on my wife's birthday, I may not be here.
Six?
Five?
Five.
We could do it as early as.
Possibly six, I'm pretty sure.
Four fifteen, honestly.
Kerry, can you make Monday evening?
I'll have to let you know.
Toya, you can't commit?
I don't know how my back's gonna be. Like I say, I should've already been home. I got a back surgery starting at six thirty in the morning, so.
Laurie?
I can make Monday work.
Yes, yes.
I'll do my best.
You ain't got much going on.
I know I can make it six o'clock, I don't five as if.
For what? For when? Monday morning?
Monday evening.
Monday evening, yes. Sorry.
So we're one sort of a form.
I'll be here whenever this.
When's Charles coming back?
That, I don't know.
I mean, it's possible I could be in five, but I usually, that's, I'd be coming in, so it'd be close.
I'm gonna say, let's shoot for Monday evening.
Monday evening at five is the plan?
Yep, and we'll stay till it's done.
Whoever's on the park board, we're gonna be canceling that meeting, so anything that's on that agenda is gonna get pushed to the next meeting.
You're good, Autumn?
I mean, we don't usually have.
Okay.
So do we have to make a motion to move all of this officially?
We just take no action. I am curious if we can, I don't think we can blanket no action. I think we're gonna have to go line by line and take no action on all of them.
You have to go line by line?
So you are officially admitting your motion to no action?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will officially second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Huh?
Can we, let's do that, wave the reading on?
Charles says he'll be home.
And if he's willing to, as we get to him, make the motion, I'll be willing to be the second for every one of them. Just get it quick, quick, quick.
Good. So right now, we're all agreeing, so we're gonna come Monday night.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, and we're gonna stay till it's done.
He says he can make it.
We'll get an agenda posted on that tomorrow? All right, you amended your motion?
Yep.
Yes.
He seconded it.
Don't you a second? Al for the vote?
Chopshier?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Banthea?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item C, do I have a motion?
Motion.
A wave of three.
Wait, guys, hang on.
Sorry.
I know you guys wanna get out of here, and I do too, but I still have to write everything down.
Sorry.
All right, whose motion?
All motion.
All motion.
Okay.
So your, your item is to take no action and wave the reading?
Correct.
It's going to take even longer because I have to write all that.
That's going to be on everyone.
You can't just analog copy paste, you know? Control C, control V.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item D, we're on D, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Item D, do I have a motion and a wave of the reading?
Motion table and wave.
Motion table and wave reading?
Second.
Gantier, second from Rushier. When you're ready, call for the vote.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item E?
Same motion.
Can you please just repeat it?
So you want to no action, wave the reading on E?
Second.
Motion from Gantier, second from Rushier.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Item F?
Same motion.
Yep. Gantier makes motion, no action, wave reading.
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item G?
Same motion.
We have a motion for no action, wave the reading from Gantier?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item H?
Same motion.
We have a motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier. Call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item I?
Same motion.
We have a motion for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Gantier, second from Rushier.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item J?
Same motion.
We have a motion from Gantier, no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item K?
Same motion.
We have a motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item L?
Same motion.
We have a motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Item M?
Same motion.
Motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item N?
Same motion.
Motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item O?
Same motion.
Motion from Gantier for no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Stop talking, please. Respectfully. I have enough. Who made it?
Gantier, no action, wave the reading? Second from Rushier.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item P?
Same motion.
Motion from Gantier, no action, wave the reading?
Second.
Second from Rushier.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rushiers?